We have a pledge tonight by Jensen Cooms. Troop fifteen ten.
May the audience please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The audience may be seated.
Thank you, Jensen. Communications, right?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Just a few items to bring you up to speed on. When we had the strategic planning meeting, we worked on goals at the end. Christie has done a really great job of putting those goals together based on the comments and things that were shared at the meeting. I'm just working to try to polish them up. We're gonna send you copies of those so you can validate if you agree with them. We're keeping them simpler than they've been done in the past, but just know that I'm trying to get those finished up for you. Next, we're in the process of the health insurance renewal and you had authorized the mayor and council member Haga to meet with staff. That's ongoing and we're continuing the meetings. If there's anything that you're interested in of the information, it kind of takes an interpreter to sit down with you and kind of go through things, but just know that if you want to get brought up to speed where we're at right now, just let me know and I'll be glad to sit down with you and help you out. And we appreciate the mayor and council members' Hagas' input up to this point in time. The next one is Comcast Cares Days. Folks in the audience, I hope you'll listen up. Last year, we had twelve hundred volunteers in the rain. This year Comcast has challenged us to have two thousand volunteers for Comcast Cares Days. And we're looking for projects in parks, public right of ways, and things like that to make this city look better. The... The date is, I don't have it written down, it's April, or, uh... Twenty-fifth, Saturday, April twenty-fifth, it'll be in the morning. We are looking for people to start signing up. We have the registration on our website, but we just don't have people going on and actually signing up. And this is how we know how many people to have T-shirts for, breakfast and pizza. So I see some scouts back here, I hope those were some things that excited them, pizza and breakfast, not to mention a free T-shirt. But please go online and get signed up now so that they can get that count. That's very important. And then we're also encouraging our staff to help sign up to be managers and run the crews and make sure things are being done correctly. We've offered them compensation time, time and a half, and of course with our time and a half policy, compensation policy, if they will come and help out with that. And so as department heads, they've been hearing this speech for a few weeks, please, let's get our staff to come help out. And they can count towards the volunteers. And then I know Chief Diamond's gonna probably duck under the desk, but I want to let the public know, I've already sent this to the council, that Chief Diamond will be presented the Chief of the Year at the Chiefs Association Meeting in St. George on the twenty-fifth of March. And because that is also a council meeting date and the date that you will be choosing your new council member, it's kind of an awkward time for anybody to go down and to support him, but Chief McElreef was kind enough to volunteer to do that. And so he will be going down. If there's anything you want added to the mayor's speech, please get with Christie and get that added in there. Chief McElreef will read the speech or have it memorized, I don't know how he decided on that. But we congratulate Chief McElreef for that award that he will be receiving on that night, so he won't be here either. That's all that I have. Is there any questions that you need?
Questions from council?
Thank you.
My only question is, I'm not sure that Chief McElreef can speak with the country flair. Oh, thanks.
Big shoes to fill.
Will you loan him a pair of cowboy boots at least?
Yeah, maybe we need to do that. Jeff? Tom Berdett?
Nothing but nightmare.
Ryan?
Nothing to nightmare.
Wow. Wena? Chief McElreef? Chief Diamond?
Enough has been said about me.
Wow. Hey, congratulations. Councilmember Southworth?
Uh, nothing tonight, other than just to add my congratulations to Chief Diamond. He's been a great addition to our community, we're so happy to have him and not surprised by this selection, so congratulations.
Councilmember Nickle?
Thank you, Mayor, just briefly, the council's aware of this, but with the audience, I just wanted to take time to mention this again. It's good to get the word out, I hear it frequently, but I do have the opportunity of serving on the Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District's water board. And just a reiteration to the public, because I've heard the concerns about how warm and dry it's been this year. It is the warmest and with respect to the Jordan Valley Reservoir and Deer Creek Reservoir, it is the warmest and driest winter in America. And with that comes a lot of concern with respect to water, but the district is confident with our partnership with Utah Valley Water Conservancy District that we have sufficient water, what we say is water supply for the deliveries for the expected year. And next year is what has yet to remain. But we do have enough for this year, but that does leave that, the importance and expresses the importance of conservation, water, specifically water conservation this year, just as we prepare for the next. We have enough, but you still need to be concerned, just ensure we have enough in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Haga?
Nothing, Mayor.
Councilmember Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to report that I did attend the community of council meeting on Tuesday at Mary City Hall. The chief, Russo, from West Valley City was there, as well as the prosecutor, discussing the difference it's made. They have a hundred and ninety officers wearing body cams and the difference it's made in the complaints they've received on officers. People don't, once they find out that the officer had a body cam, they want to drop the suit. It was very informative and I have given, I know our officers are now looking at body cams, some are wearing them. And I did give Chief Diamond the information I did receive from that meeting. So if any of you want it, I can forward it to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McCallum?
Unfortunately, I think tonight I'm gonna be making up for a time that otherwise would have been gained. I have three items tonight. Number one, the day after our last council meeting, I had the opportunity with council, now former council member Stoker, to meet with the county, to meet with the Salt Lake County Cultural Facilities Support Program grant folks regarding our ideas for the facility that we want to create. Couple of things that we learned. And I'll just kind of skim through my notes quickly. On average, they only receive ten to twelve applications per year and more than half of them fund. Some of the groups that were there when we were, were looking for smaller things like music equipment or funds to remodel a food preparation area, something like that. So nothing on the same scale that we're looking. The group that presented, the folks from the county, they actually used the same program to pay for the building that we were in, which is the Valley West Building, it's a thirty-three million dollar facility, the county paid for half of that one. The county's master plan actually includes a cultural arts facility somewhere in the southwest region of the valley. It's highlighting us, which is kind of nice. The process for application is where we're gonna get into a little bit of trouble. We talked about putting away a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to start the design process with the idea that we could bring in another hundred and twenty-five thousand from the county to help out with that. The issue is timing. We could apply for that, for that grant. Applications are due April fifteenth, or April fourteenth, day before tax day. It finally makes it to the county mayor's office in July and then the last, there's actually a couple of reviews before it gets to him in July. Then funding actually happens January, February, sometime around there. So we're, we're quite a ways out as far as receiving the funding. I think in the time that it would take to get everything, we'd likely already be done with this portion. The other thing that came up is when we're looking at, when we're looking at the possibility of the grant there, when we're looking at the full facility, it's been commented that we have to pay for, we have to come up with half the funds, the county comes up with the additional half of the funds. We do count the value of the land in that, and it's the current value of the land, not the value when we got it in like nineteen-ten or whatever. But the current value of the land. We also include the value of staff time that would be contributed to that as well. So we already have the basis for a substantial match from the county right off the bat. They expressed a very intense desire to work with us as we tried to go through the grant process to get this money. They repeatedly say, it said, please call us, we want to do something in that portion of the valley. We would be happy to walk you through step by step as you complete the grant application. There's some things that are required, such as the design documents and a final price tag if we were to do the full grant, not just look for the design grant, but the actual building grant. Obviously, that's a little hard, we won't have that by April, but they said that's something we can work with. If we've already got a site narrowed down, we've already got an investment in the land, we can already commit the personnel time, possibly other funds to that. They think there are ways to work through that so that we can still get our application in now, so we could be looking for additional funding for the full facility as soon as January, February timeframe next year. There's a couple more things I could go into on that, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to fill you in at length a little bit later.
Well, just a comment. I believe that the fund, the grant funds come back after the money's been expended, so we could expend the money for the design, knowing that it's returned, so that we can do it by July, once it's approved.
They're a little iffy on retroactively completing the grants. If we put in the grant request for the design and then we go ahead and we do it and then it gets approved, yes, we could get reimbursed. If we just go forward and we do the full amount of the design on our own, then we can also count that design work towards our contribution along with the land and the staff time and things like that too. So either way, if we take half of the design and count that, or we pay all the design and then we use that towards full work.
I just hope that we'll apply for the design like we specified last council meeting and then we'll go for the matching funds as we know what the funds actually we need are after we have a design. It's hard to know going in how much it's gonna cost until you have a design, so.
I'm, I, I hope we don't stall on getting an application into that hundred and twenty-five that we want, because we never got a dime at West Jordan that anybody can remember from this particular grant fund. It's way long past due to get it, so.
I, I think the design's a no-brainer, obviously we, we can do that and apply for that. We also have the ability though this year too, if we wanted to do the full.
I just think it's too aggressive, but I mean, I'll, I'll look to what the council wants to do, then should I report?
So the other two items I have, had a chance to meet with the Arts Council last Thursday, and this has come up a couple of times and perhaps it's time to take action. They're asking if the youth theater can be formally moved back under the theater arts umbrella for, for those resident committees. Right now, it's, the funding is broken out separate, but everything else they do is together. When they look at scheduling the facilities, they do that all for the Arts Council, when they have their meetings, they're all together. They share all their resources together. From a financial perspective, it would make it a little bit easier for them to have all of the arts together under one umbrella. So I would ask if there would be any opposition to offering direction to staff to bring back a proposal to council to include the youth theater underneath the arts, theater arts umbrella.
You know, it took a lot of doing to split that off and create that a few years back when we were on the council. I'd like to study that before I, you know, before I begin on it, because that was a big deal. Were the youth council involved in that discussion and they were agreeable to that?
Yes.
I can't remember what the, what the reason was we split them off. So I, I too would like to, because there was a really good compelling reason why they wanted to be separated, it made a lot of sense. And to go back, I just want to be reminded of that, and maybe that situation doesn't exist today, and so.
And that's what I learned in the conversations with them, it sounded like there were personality issues with the folks who were currently in administrative roles within the various organizations and at the time it was easier to split them apart. But.
Just, just one comment. Councilmember Haga?
Thanks, Mayor. Since they have a board, they have a chair, and they have a functioning board, if they want to do it, I think let's let them come back and say, yeah, you're me.
I agree, if that's the meaning, I just, I want to have just a little more information than just tonight to say, go ahead, because there was, you can remember, it's been, what, eight years ago or seven years ago, there was a lot of dialogue on this.
So let me change the question just a little bit. Would there be opposition to including this as a business item on a future council meeting?
Anybody, that's up to it.
Okay. Then my last issue is a little bit different. As you drive around the city, we have a number of facilities, commercial retail facilities, that aren't at full utilization. You have the old Albertsons over at Seventy South River Road, you've got the, well, the, the facility, well, let me, let me just start over on this. I'm getting frustrated with the number of trailers, the semi-trailers that we see parked in our parking lots on a regular basis. That old Albertsons, you usually see two or three there, there was one there as I left tonight, on weekends you'll see three or four. There's usually a couple across the street from us here at City Hall, over at the thrift shop, or the thrift store, the thrift store on Seventy South Thirty-two-hundred West. You'll frequently see them there as well. I've worked with code enforcement in the past as we've seen some of these, when we were getting up to six, eight, ten over at the old Albertsons on weekends. And they put a good emphasis on attacking that to try and reduce the numbers, but it looks like it's just sort of spreading to other areas. I would ask if we would be, if there would be opposition in directing staff to take more of a focused approach on stopping these types of issues. They, they're not supposed to be there overnight or for long term and something that's meant to be for retail customer parking. And I, I think it's becoming a blight on the city, I think it's a deterrent to economic development when folks come through and look at potential properties, places to locate their businesses, and it looks like a truck stop. Would there be any opposition in offering that direction to staff? No?
Yes?
I know that code enforcement generally looks for those things and tries to give notices of violation to them, so. I'll, if you don't mind, I'll check with Brock and see what they've noticed and maybe they're just over there on the weekend, I don't know. But that's usually something they keep their eye on.
It usually happens in the evening hours, usually after three, four o'clock and then over on weekends. When Brock was helping with the issue over on Seventieth and Redwood, I think he might have had to involve the police department for some of it, but it's something that took a few months because the property owners were disengaged. It, it was a little bit more difficult than just putting something on the window, but it, it seems to be coming more endemic lately. And that's all I have this with.
Okay, thank you. I just had one issue tonight. I would like to report that House Bill two ninety passed the House and the Senate, come back to the House with a minor amendment and passed, and so it goes to the governor's desk next week. That's the automobile dealership bill. I must state that the difference between a year ago and this year, I've never been treated more disrespectful than last year in committee meeting at the Office one oh one. And this year, we, we gained the respect and this is a great first step. We're far from done with it and I believe that the council getting behind, you know, West Jordan is the one that was really the driver on this and thanks to our representatives for helping us with that. So it should be signed next week. Okay, citizens' comments. I have quite a few signed up tonight. The first one, I'll remind you that you'll have three minutes to speak on your topic. First one signed up to speak, Jason Casto.
Yes, my name is Jason Casto. I'm here representing the Jordan Education Foundation. I'm on the board of the Jordan Education Foundation, which is a full-functioning nonprofit organization with the task of raising money for the students of Jordan School District. My role on that is I am in charge of one fundraising activity, which is a race. And the Jordan District Dash is what it's called, is kind of a, one of those fun obstacle races where you kind of climb over the obstacles and up the rope and through the mud and all that kind of stuff. And I guess I'm here requesting or suggesting, I don't know the right term, that we combine that event with the West Jordan City Health Fair slash Library Summer Reading Kickoff. Kind of the genesis of this is that someone that's on the executive committee that plans the race is, has been in contact with the, the city events planner, Julie Brown is her name, and he, he owns Edge Motorsports and does all kinds of events. And he has done an event in Harriman, they call it the Harriman Enduro Cross, and it's one of these events where they build kind of an obstacle course and motorcycle jumping and all that. It's become a big success for Harriman and she has been working with him to try to do something like that apparently in West Jordan. Well, as we were planning this year's run, this year's race, he was suggesting some possible ideas and just mentioned that he had talked to Julie and that they had wanted to do something and maybe we could do something in conjunction. So with that, I ended up getting in touch with Julie and she talked to me a little bit about some of the things that West Jordan does and it just seemed, I mean, they're still working on that as a separate thing, but this seemed like an absolute home run fit. So again, the, the foundation, sole responsibility is to raise money for students within the Jordan School District. This race specifically a hundred percent of funds go to classroom grants for students in the district. And Julie had indicated, hey, as part of this big event, we do have a run, but it hasn't been something that's been a lot of focus and maybe we could fold this in and it could be good for everybody. I recently, yesterday actually, was meeting with all of the principals of the whole district and was talking to them about the race and two separate principals had mentioned to me, could you please do the race somewhere in West Jordan? We would love to have it in West Jordan, there's more, it's called Title IX schools, I guess, in West Jordan. I personally love that idea because it's more central, it makes it easier to do. I've been wanting to put it in West Jordan as well. And, and it just seems like it could be divine, divine providence. And so, anyway, so that's what I'm recommending. I, I understand that Healthy West Jordan is a committee that kind of aids with that. So I guess at your suggestion, I don't know if the next step might be, if you'd like me to coordinate with Healthy West Jordan and Julie Brown and explore the idea of whether this works for the benefit of everybody, so.
Please do that. Will you coordinate with Julie and I, I've already mentioned it to the Healthy West Jordan.
Okay.
They're having a meeting tomorrow at five, if you'd like to attend, it's right here in room three thirty-one, right here in the hall.
That Julie had told me that, and so again, it seems like it might be perfect, I mean, literally to come down this last second and to talk to her first this week and in this meeting and then Healthy West Jordan, it might end up being perfect, but I don't know. But it could be absolutely dynamite.
I, I, I don't know if it'd be appropriate, maybe what we could ask is that if our Healthy West Jordan Committee in conjunction with, with your committee and Julie, if they could work up a proposal, at least we have something we could, we could evaluate. Because we need to look at, you know, I, I look at what the literacy goals of the library and what they're trying to do, what we're trying to do with our Healthy West Jordan, what you're trying to do with, with your organization. They could all work together, but when we put all these things together, we bring a lot of people and now we're talking about police service and fire service and, and public works. And then there's, we have to be getting a cost. How do we allocate all that cost? Do we have some kind of cost sharing involved in there? Do we need to do that? So I'd like to look at, you know, all these different aspects of it, but if it was not, if that's appropriate, let's go that direction and have them bring us a proposal.
I think the main reason for inviting this gentleman to speak tonight was just to make sure that he was not doing something that you would be opposed to if, as you just mentioned, council member Southworth invited him to sit down with Julie and the rest and put a proposal, just bring it back to you, we just didn't want to blindside you or surprise you. If you're okay with that, that'll be exactly the direction to go.
Okay. Any direction or things that you want us to discuss as we talk about, whether this makes sense for everybody?
I just think if you'll work with Julie and the Healthy West Jordan and bring a proposal back, I think that the council would follow the direction of our committee and our events coordinator, so.
Fantastic.
I have one question for you.
Yes.
Are you Tex Casto's son?
I, I am, I went to West Jordan High School, he was a teacher and a coach at West Jordan High School, so I have a personal interest in seeing it done here as well. Well, I notice your last name's Rolf, you don't happen to be a wrestling family Rolf, do you?
Yeah, I am, but he was my coach, so.
Oh, he was? So you, you go to Hillcrest High School then?
I did.
Oh, fantastic.
So did council member Southworth.
All right, well, hey, it's small world.
Yes, it is, thanks.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Barbara Backman?
Yes, I'm Barbara Backman and this is Pam Markison. We are the moms of the Montana kids that have the flooding issue with Constitution Park. I brought you pictures back in October when we were talking about the four million being moved over to storm drain. We understand that there's a grant program to help the kids fix their house, get it ready, because we know that this program on the trunk line is gonna take about three years to complete, which still puts our kids in peril. With this grant program that we're really excited about, we understand that funds for it wouldn't be available until July first. That kind of puts them really tight because the rains, the heavy rains that really affect them as far as flooding hit mid-July and go through the fall. We were hoping that we could ask for a one-time expenditure when the grant program's completed so that funds from next year can be moved into this year to give us time for the construction phase and everything to get what needs to be done to secure those homes that have been most impacted by the water from Constitution Park. The three homes, Victor and Patty, of course, they take the brunt of it. The next home, if Victor's completely underwater, then it goes to Brenda and Lindy on the street behind them. Those houses have been decimated. I've, I've had Mr. Hatterley come over and see it firsthand, and this is a yearly event since two thousand eight. And if you could grant us that one-time expenditure and move it so we can get contractors and whatever else we need to do to secure those homes, we would be most grateful. The next thing I need to know is, is the committee, I understand the committee's working on it now to decide how much funds are needed, how they're going to be administered. And I just want to make sure that they understand the gravity of those first three homes, that they're not just looking at curb and gutter and sidewalk raising and it's more involved than that. With, with your help, it would be great. How would we go about knowing if you can do that one-time expenditure and, and get us on track to get those houses secured?
I have your information. We'll have staff get with you and I just want to reassure you that we are addressing the problem as rapidly as we can. We're still waiting for some information about the solution to the problem, but we do have, we do have our staff and everyone here is concerned with me.
The other thing with, with the, the way that they did the new asphalt on that circle, they domed it. So that circle no longer holds the regular storm water that used to just hit sandbags and now even normal storms during the summer affect that house as well. It's such a nightmare to watch. We are bringing in sandbags this week, we're gonna get with, with Wendell's office and Jared and his people.
We have just two questions, one from council member, and one here and then from our.
Actually, there's a, a quick comment. I had asked staff last fall if we could orchestrate a time to do an open house with the residents in this area to help let everybody know what's coming of the master plan. Some of the other things that you've been talking about would be discussed there as well. And right now, they're actually waiting on me to get back to them. Wendell has proposed two dates, either Thursday, April second, or Thursday, April ninth, as possible dates for an open house where we could have public works available to everybody. I'm gonna get back with him and find out if we can do it either of those days or if we need to do it a little bit later once we have a little bit more information. But I'm hoping something in April, we'll be able to have city staff out there in the neighborhood available for everybody. Does that ask better questions?
July first is just so late to wait for funding, it just is. We do want the rain. Our yards want the rain either.
Not just too much, too fast, no. Bryce?
Well, Mrs. Backman has been so good to stay in touch with me. I have her name permanently on a sticky note in the front of my notebook that I carry around. And so I appreciate the fact that as a concerned citizen, she is remaining involved and encouraging us to get going. Wendell and his staff and others are helping with the grant program, remodeling that after the sewer program that we have for people. So I don't know what his delivery date anticipated for that will be, but he knows that that's a high priority. And then I just explained to Mrs. Backman that we have a green sheet for that amount of money that we anticipated it would take to get going starting in July first. But if they were interested in soliciting the council, that's why they're asking you tonight. Would that be something that if we get the grant put together and can get started on taking applicants, would you appropriate a certain amount of money in this budget year? With, you know, we always do a budget adjustment towards the end of the year to get some of that underway and, and that's what they're really asking for, so we'll continue moving forward. So, uh, we'll continue moving forward on that and, and bring that to you and then you can decide if you want to appropriate some money.
Thank you so much for all your support, you guys.
Thank you. Steve Jones?
My name is Steve Jones, thirty-two, thirty-four, West, sixty-nine, twenty, South. Um, the comment that I'm going to do for this part here is, uh, is based on the business item HC, um, to do with the crossing, um, there on Seventieth South. Um, having been a resident here for numerous, numerous years, um, uh, like, uh, like has been proposed, um, I, reading the, the document, it seemed like there was basically two options that were being recommended. One of them was just to paint and the other one was to put in the flashers. I'm here to tell you, at that particular area, painting does nothing, all right? It's a, uh, part of the problem is the landscaping on the north side is very difficult to, when somebody stands up there to go across that in a crosswalk, even with the flags, very difficult to see in that rush hour traffic. Um, personally, I, I go through those flashing type lights, um, where I work over in South Jordan and it's a four lane with a center turn lane, so it's very similar to what we have over there and they work very, very well. Um, personally, I think it's a, a very high value, uh, type solution, so, um, I think it's option three and I'm, I'm recommending that we follow option three. Thank you.
Thank you. Aaron Bach?
Thank you, Mayor, forgive me just a minute. Um, I'm here in respects to the spur line that's going on up at, uh, District Four behind the Smiths back there. I'm a resident, uh, have been there for many years. Uh, when we first moved in, uh, it was fine, there was one line going through and an occasional train about once a day. Uh, Savage Industries, uh, as you probably know, I would guess, has been putting in spur lines and, uh, having that for storage, uh, for storing cars, rail cars. That, and they've been good, in fact, they even sent a letter. I don't know if you've heard how much information you've got on that with their addition for another spur line. I imagine, uh, someone here has been approached by Savage, just letting know that's happening. I hope so. My concern is, is they, wrote in the letter, they, they were very good about addressing the graffiti issue, which obviously we don't like on those cars behind our homes. But I think they're ignoring a, a bigger fact. In fact, it's kind of the elephant in the room and they don't want to bring it up, is the idea that the things are storing back there. If you knew what was back there and if you and I realized, uh, full intent, uh, if anything sparked up back there, my house would be leveled. Uh, there's petroleum, uh, right now there's crude. I'm, I, I keep track of some of the little placards that are on the trail cards. And I know that they've said, well, not to worry, um, it's been, they're empty cars. Well, that might take away some of the concern as far as this flame, but we're talking about explosibility now, the explosion issues that go on with the, the, uh, the gases that are left in the car. In fact, I, I'm curious if the fire chief has got some comment on that. I'd love to hear what you think and feel, uh, because it's, it's, you know, it started out with one spur line and a few cars and, uh, now I think we're up to four, five, maybe this is spur line number five. And if anything should spark up there, we might have our own little West Texas, uh, experience and, uh, you'll have to come to my funeral. But I hope we don't go down that road. I, I just would like you to be aware of that. I'm approaching me a love. I know some of the, much of the rail, uh, laws are set federally because we cross boundaries, state boundaries and there's a very powerful, a very powerful, uh, train lobby that would be a huge uphill battle, but I, I feel like we couldn't be the only people who are dealing with this issue. And certainly, uh, every year we have more and more chemicals coming into our society and now it's more and more storage. Um, and anytime the price of gas goes down, I don't know if you know the theory of what's going on, but, uh, they basically, uh, local oil that is drilled out and it costs more than a hundred bucks a barrel, they'll put it in storage and wait for the price to come up and that's what's going on behind my house right now. It's crude oils back there right now. Uh, but I'd love to hear your comment and if you have any questions, I'd love to answer them. Okay, well?
Thank you. Without some contact you. Aaron? Alexandra Egramo?
Mayor and council, uh, let's take a moment and meditate. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, may we pause for a moment to reflect upon our common goals before we begin the business of this meeting. We are privileged to gather here together in a system that gives us freedom to participate in our own governments. Whether from within or through the strength provided by our personal face, we seek wisdom, understanding, fairness and resolve in the fulfillment of our duties and in pursuance of our goals. May our differences be respected and our common aspiration of promoting the public good be our guide in carrying out the tasks we are about to undertake. Thank you. Uh, I would like the item of arts. Uh, I was here seven, eight years ago and we talked and talked about the youth separated from the older one and I would suggest a public hearing. I don't like the idea behind closed doors meetings. Let's have a public hearing so we can hear the youth and the, uh, other, uh, art, uh, session. I wanted to say I'm very, very disappointed about, uh, no one's perfect, but about West Jordan policemen, I have been a target and I am shocked about the award on March twenty-fifth. I have been rudely treated by our chief. I have, I don't, we have so many killings going on in the United States of America by police with unarmed citizens and to have the chief tell me, you can keep your ideas to yourself, what you think about policemen who shot who, who didn't. The man that put up his shovel, he did that because, in my opinion, because of self-defense. I went to the library, it said, police used to be police because they want to help people. And the, it, right there on the internet, it says no longer, police are police because they want to have power over the people. And for any policeman, I don't care who it is, you don't make a statement about a killing from anywhere. And I just want to say, I am shocked of the award to our police chief. Our police chief told me that he felt Michael Jordan deserved to be shot. I'm sorry. That is not an appropriate comment by any police official, let alone our West Jordan police chief. I am shocked, I'm dismayed. I'm going to continue my dissertation about what happened to twelve policemen with me. When I was here, uh, I have eighteen minutes, so I'm going to have to continue next week, but I am very, very disappointed because twelve policemen surrounded me in a circle like I was some sort of alien. I'm eighty-two, what happened to me was despicable and the police should have said to me, we're going to search you because, anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Pam Markison? You're, okay, I did have a lot of speed. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to speak during citizen comments? Please come forward. Uh, please state your name and address and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Uh, my name is Jason Walsworth. I live at nineteen nineteen West, seventy-one, twenty-five, South. Um, I just wanted to comment also on, uh, business item eight C concerning the crosswalk on Seventieth South. Uh, I live just a few hundred feet from that crosswalk and have the opportunity to drive by it quite often. Um, I can't count the number of times I've seen, uh, somebody sitting there with a flag waiting for minutes, trying to cross. Um, also various close calls. Um, and I, I want to echo, uh, Mr. Jones' recommendation, uh, and his, his comments that, uh, simply painting, uh, new lines on the, the crosswalk won't, won't do anything there, um, and I, I think that lights are, uh, at least needed there to, to alert the, the drivers, the, the crosswalk and those that are crossing there. Um, I know that those crosswalks with the lights have been implemented other places in West Jordan successfully and I know that those crosswalks might have more foot traffic, uh, than this one at Seventieth South, but I think the, the amount of traffic and the type of traffic that's, that's passing there on Seventieth, uh, requires something more than just painting the lines. Uh, I'd also like to comment that I think any of the options that would put, uh, a median or a, a concrete block in the middle of the street would also hinder, um, traffic trying to get, uh, motorists trying to get out of the, the neighborhoods and, uh, and onto Seventieth. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, please come forward. If you can state your name and address.
Yeah, my name is Jennifer Dankman. I live on Seventieth South and eighteen ninety-one West, so I'm literally fifty feet or so away from the crosswalk. Um, I would like to speak on the same thing. I don't know what number it is on your thing, but, um, first of all, the concrete barriers would pretty much prevent me from being able to get out of my driveway, you know, um, that road is very difficult to get out on, on a normal and best situation. Um, but the, the crosswalk definitely needs a light. Um, I have personally crossed that road. I'm a single mother with five young children. Um, I've crossed that road with two children in a double stroller and two children on either side of me holding on to the stroller and almost been hit several times myself, holding the orange flag, making sure that I was very seen and, you know, dancing pretty much down the aisle to get across the road and I, I've seen multiple other, um, close calls, even just sitting in my driveway, cleaning my garage out, watching children as young as five years old try to cross that road. Um, of course, that one brought a whole other issue. I sent my thirteen-year-old son over to run and, you know, help that child across the street because I watched him almost get hit. We were, recently there was a young girl in our neighborhood who did get hit in that road. Uh, Chloe was walking with my son and they were getting ready to cross the road when I saw him and I actually called him back, um, to get mad at him for not doing his chores and at that point, he, he came back and she got hit and we watched her get hit, um, as she was crossing the road. I'm very grateful that my son wasn't hit with her. I can't imagine what it would have done if he would have crushed her as well, if they would have both been, been hit at the same time, but I know we need a light there to help. I mean, I personally cross that road probably two times a day with my children, um, taking my young kids to the park that's directly across the street from my house. Um, otherwise I would have to, you know, get in my car, drive all the way down to Seventieth and Redwood and, you know, turn around and, I mean, for a quick little stop. Um, I just really would like you to consider the overhead lights, flashing light of some kind that, um, like the others have mentioned, the, the painting would not be enough. Um, I, I've watched where two cars have stopped and the third car has not been able to see, um, somebody crossing in that direction and we really need to protect our young kids who are crossing those roads.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
Um, my name's Justin Peterson. I'm with Peterson Development, two twenty-five, South, two hundred East. Uh, I, I, I think this was the forum I came out tonight, uh, just to attend, uh, item eight A, it's the adoption of the Highlands Assessment Area. I just wanted to be a little proactive and, uh, have some, uh, we have some brochures that we printed up, uh, for our builder partners in, uh, the Highlands, uh, Master Plan Community and, uh, we look forward to hopefully the swift adoption of this assessment area. I, I think, uh, adopting that tonight will, uh, again, it will go on properties that are being closed, it will run with the title, people will be aware of it. Uh, residents within the Highlands Assessment Area will know that, uh, there will be an assessment for the maintenance of the open space and, uh, if I could pass these out now, that's all I have.
Would you have to declare, Justin? Thanks. Councilmember Southward had a follow-up on earlier.
I did, thank you, Mayor. I, I failed to mention, we recently had a, uh, resident of our city whose home burned down. It was, uh, David Burt lives over, um, uh, in the Ocker Shadows neighborhood. He is a, um, disabled veteran. His wife is, is disabled as well. She's been in and out of hospitals for the last few years, is, uh, mostly confined to a wheelchair and, uh, their house burnt down most recently and they're trying to, uh, gather , uh, life together and rebuild. And anyway, what I wanted to mention is that he is, um, working with the American Legion, the VFW, uh, Utah Marines, Nathan Osman, um, let's see, there's some other organizations, or Homes for Heroes, and they're putting on a benefit concert for him and they're looking for a venue. Um, they would like to have it be a home, uh, a hometown event, uh, West Jordan would be a location for this and so I, I would present that to the council if that's something we'd be interested in, in, uh, being a, the, I guess maybe a sponsorship of some sort.
Anyone opposed to it?
Okay.
So, well.
I would like to know that, that, that we'd be willing to, to help out in that regard and, uh, help a, to help a, a veteran of our country, what is my effect there?
Okay, items, uh, six consent items, uh, it's been asked to pull item G. I need it. G. Motion being ordered. Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I move we approve the consent, uh, calendar with the exception of G, which we'll discuss later.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Nichols and a second by Councilmember McConaughey. Discussion of motion. Let's vote.
Councilmember Southward?
Aye.
Mayor Rolfe?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Haga?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Vote House of Six in favor.
You know what, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take a personal privilege time, I'm gonna move G right now, let's discuss it since we have staff that are waiting just to hear this and we have three public hearings and business items, uh, so, um, Councilmember Haga, you pulled this item.
Thanks, Mayor. Really simple question, really. Uh, my, uh, proponent of this, I just want to make sure, you know, we budgeted, um, in the budget on, for twenty fourteen, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the Ronwood Phase Two. And I just want to make sure, is that what we budgeted or is it six hundred and seventy-one dollars, that different item?
Please, either you or both, I don't know.
Uh, Mayor, council, that, uh, the, the funding for this is coming out of park impact fees and when the original, not the original, but the last phase that we completed of the Ronwood Park, the splash pad and everything, we were intending to build this at about that same time, but we wanted to do it separately because we wanted to put the plan together, we wanted to get a little more information from, uh, staff about what the needs would be in that particular area. And so it, it was a little, um, a little more comprehensive than what we had originally intended because of the, the area now can be a west side storage for salt in the, in the wintertime and things like that. But regarding the funding, the funding is, uh, available in the park's impact fee and it's the park's facility and so that's why it's, uh, coming out of that particular account. I hope, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I, I just, well, just to identify it as, is it Ronwood Phase Park, Phase Two, PK zero zero four, is that the line item?
Basically, it's an extension of the fact that we did the splash pad. Basically, it's an extension of the fact that we did the splash pad, and we were intending to do this at the same time, but we wanted it more comprehensive, and so we wanted to try to get more information, that's why it didn't go at the same time as the splash pad.
Councilmember Hagan, I just clarify, are you wondering if we actually have that money in the current budget?
Well, we passed seven hundred and fifty thousand.
That's what's on the contract approval. You're asking if the money is actually physically in the budget for that. Jim, you're saying we have the money from the park impact fees?
Yeah, it, there's, uh, we're short about a hundred thousand dollars in impact fees, but about fifty thousand a month come in, and so we're gonna have the impact fees available by the time this thing finishes.
Did that answer your question?
I, I want the building, so I'm not gonna oppose it, so, I'll, I'll give some more clarification. It's probably just a matter of looking at the budget, and so, I move to approve, um, I have to go back.
Consent G?
Consent item G. Consent item G. I have a motion.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hagan, a second by Councilmember Southward. Discussion?
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, the concern that, that arises with me, I, I too, I want to see this building there, it needs, it's, needs to be there, but it sounds like we're more, we're looking at more of the use than just parks, we're reaching outside of that, but we're gonna fund that specifically with the park impact fees, and that makes me a little bit nervous. Um, what other options do we have as far as, as far as a funding source to pick up, uh, to share this load so that we're not using a park impact fees for streets, uh, type functions? Is really the concern I, I would bring up. Um, maybe we could justify that? We could probably justify that use. Uh, I'm just expressing my doubts that I would want to justify that. I would want that money, a portion of that, to come from what I would deem the more appropriate location, save parks, impact fees for parks. So, that, that would be my, um, my concern there. Um, I, I did, uh, make a second to the motion, but I will speak against it until such time we can, um, have, I guess, a discussion about what other options we have, but I do want to see this building going.
Councilmember Hagan?
Uh, clarifying, so do you have objections as part of this funding, too? Is that your...
I do. My, mine is specifically, I want to see the building built, but I want to have a clarification. Well, I, I have some hesitancy of taking parks' impact fees and using it for what I think is a role's function, really. I mean, we'll have to put salt inside of a park, but, but, and I could be wrong here, but, but I see that as maybe we need to find, uh, a funding, additional funding source to help cover that portion of it.
I've asked Brian to step up and, uh, explain exactly what he feels from our Parks Director.
Um, the, the only thing that's gonna be ran out of there right now is a street function, Councilmember Southward, would be just a bait for salt, just to cut down on the, uh, the time, the, the trucks that are out west, to cut down the response time to get out west and stay out there instead of having to come all the way back into public works.
Mm-hmm.
Ninety-nine percent of this building will be used for parks, we're growing out west even rapidly, and that, you'll hear more of that tonight. Um, so, in my opinion, the building is, is a park building, I mean, it just has a small function right now with salt storage.
And I don't disagree, and I think, I know we need this building, I know that. We need it for quite some time. What I would suggest is that we say whatever percentage of this project is dedicated to streets or whatever else, then that percentage should be funded by, by, through their funding sources, and maintain the park impact fees for strictly park, uh, type projects. That's all I'm saying. Just give out whatever that portion is, I don't care if it's two percent, one percent, then you go find one percent from the streets budget and, and cover that, is all I would ask.
Yes, Jim.
I, I do have some concern, uh, similar to Councilmember Southwards, Southwards. Um, I think, uh, this is the first I've heard that the building is being used for a purpose other than parks, and, and we do have to be very careful under the state laws, using, uh, impact fees for something that could be considered not, uh, in that category. So, I, yeah, yeah, if nothing else, I would ask that we maybe table this matter so we can take a closer look at, at, uh, what the impact fees are being used for, what the building's gonna be used for, and make sure that we don't have a problem, uh, using those impact fees for this purpose.
Yes, Councilmember McConaughey?
Actually, I, I think I'm gonna retract my question.
Did you have a comment?
No, no, uh-uh, that's fine, thank you.
Would you like to revise the...
Yeah, I, well, um, I'll move on with motion.
And I...
You withdraw.
I would move that we table this for further review and bring back at a time deemed appropriate by staff.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Southward and a second by Councilmember Hagan. Discussion to the motion? Let's vote.
Councilmember Hagan?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Southward?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Rob?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Vote passes six in favor.
Okay, item seven A, received public input and considered for approval, ordinance fifteen dash zero seven regarding the general plan, land use map amendment for approximately four point zero four acres from professional office and high-density residential to very high-density residential, and rezone from R one eight A and P O two R three twelve S H O, residential unit, residential twelve units per acre maximum density senior housing overlay. Tom.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This is a combination, uh, proposal, application where it not only amends the general plan, future land use map, but also is, is proposing to establish a rezone, which is a change to the official zoning map of the city. Um, it is for an assisted living facility on Redwood Road, and I'll turn the time over to Greg Nicolash to, uh, guide us through the chain. Thank you, Tom.
Uh, just up on the screen is, uh, basically what's been repeated by, uh, the mayor on, uh, the intent and the purpose of, uh, this future land use map and rezone, and, and, uh, just to add to that, I'll give you the locations of this. There, there are five parcels, those are forty-four, forty-eight, sixty-six, eighty-two, and seventy-four, ninety, South Redwood Road. Sure a lot of you know where that vacant piece is, right in front of the elementary school and the, um, the junior high. On the screen is, uh, the vicinity map and aerial showing you, um, the five parcels that are associated with this request. Total size of this is approximately four acres in size, in fact, just, just barely right over it. Um, as Tom had indicated, uh, the first part is for a future land use map amendment, this request is, uh, to amend the, the, uh, the land use map, um, to high-density from professional office, I'm, uh, from high-density residential and professional office to a very high-density residential. And then the rezone would be from professional office, which is P O, and R one eight A to R three twelve, and then this request has that additional, um, senior housing overlay, that's that acronym S H O that you see right there. That little overlay is just to secure that this would never become anything else than a senior house, housing facility. Um, if you recall, we amended that, uh, portion of the text, or we added that to the zoning text in approximately twenty-eleven, if I recall. Uh, this right here is the zoning map, um, as you can see, Redwood Road would just be, I think, does this have a pointer? Uh, anyway, you, I think you can all see on, uh, the easternmost portion of the property, that's Redwood Road running north and south, the site, uh, outlined in red right there. Um, as I indicated, this, uh, property, just to the west of this is, uh, Majestic Elementary, and then West Jordan Junior High is also abutting directly to the west, too. Uh, the northern two parcels of this property are zoned R one eight, uh, Tom's got it, and the other, uh, the parcels to the south are, uh, zoned professional office, and, uh, you can see those right there. Um, I'll move on to the future land use map right here. Um, currently, uh, you can see that the property to the north is high-density residential and, uh, to the south is professional office. Everything behind and to the west and, and, and pretty much around the whole perimeter is, uh, uh, that's a future land use of public facilities, and it's, it's also, um, zoned as such, too, so... Let's, let's get to what this request is about. Um, the, the, the reason for these two amendments is, um, to accommodate a proposed future assisted living facility. Now, what you see up here on the map is just a conceptual, we haven't, uh, really gone into parking landscaping, um, and, and any of that, it's just, uh, a, a simple concept plan to show what, um, what, uh, they are proposing in the end, and that would be a, um, a type-two, uh, memory care facility, um, that's what it's considered by the Board of Health, um, and, uh, this, it, it, all in all, would be a senior housing facility. What I'll do is just read you briefly what the applicant's intent is, what's get you to a facility would look something like this. Uh, the, just the description, as you can see in, uh, the letter intent in your report reads as follows, "This will be a traditional assisted living facility, uh, with residents receiving treatment as a type-two and memory care facility with, um, and, and that's, uh, per the Board of Health. Uh, some of the guests, in this case renters, will be mobile and receive meals and laundry services, and some may be quite impaired in need and, uh, receiving daily attention, um, from NRAs and, and/or physical therapists. Um, there will be approximately fifty units, um, give or take, we, we would have to determine how many, um, how many actual units would come during the site plan and the subdivision process, but for right now, um, they're working with approximately fifty. Um, now, the intent is to have a commercial-grade communal kitchen, uh, and the employment of, uh, of persons would be approximately one person for every three residents living in the facility. Um, now, if the council approves the amendment, the applicant, uh, like I said, must also go through that site plan process and the subdivision process, that'll go through the, uh, the Planning Commission at a later date. Um, with regard to, um, um, all the bulk and area criteria, we'll also look at that through the site plan process, uh, the building will be required to go through the Design Review Committee right before a Planning Commission hearing. Um, is there anything, do you have any questions on the S H O, because I could go into detail about that, if you, if you don't recall what that really gets us down to?
Questions?
Any questions on that? Okay, good. Um, I will say this about the S H O, the S H O can be applied to this zoning district, and I think it would work really well, um, wi- within this location. Uh, we are working on that Redwood Corridor Study and, uh, and talking with, uh, Ray about, uh, the future intent of this. Uh, Ray McCandless and I do believe that this is a really good fit for that area, there's, there's a lot of, uh, things that will not fit, uh, this is one of those things that is a much better fit than other proposals that have come along. Um, as for impact, you'll notice in the staff report that it notes the development will have less overall impact in the area in terms of traffic noise, et cetera, as I indicated, um, than many other uses. Uh, this proposal has been floated to the, um, and reviewed by the Engineering and Fire Department, um, they have reviewed, reviewed both of these amendments, and there's no concerns, uh, concerns in that, and they've also indicated that the existing utility infrastructure can be, uh, can accommodate the site. Now, uh, we did have a, a Planning Commission public hearing on February third, um, uh, where in both cases, the, uh, uh, there was a positive recommendation to the ci- uh, City Council on six to one votes, and with that, and based on the positive findings and the fact in this staff report, uh, before you, staff also agrees that the City Council should approve both, both requests. Any questions?
Questions? Looks like you're good. We'll now open the public hearing portion of this item. Please.
Mayor and council, um, I am a million percent against this. We talked a bit about this, uh, a, a year and a half ago about, uh, no more very high-density. So, I'm opposed to putting this over to very high-density, keep it at high-density, and to be limiting that twelve units per acre. You know, when we talk about Sugar House Factory, oh, we were so concerned about earthquake. So, what I'm gonna suggest, if you all are gonna keep insisting that Planning Commission, uh, that meeting a year ago, January twenty fourteen, uh, and we said we were not gonna do high-density, we were gonna keep low-density, and now we are, we're pushing high-density every time we turn around, from Gardner Village, now we go to here. So, I'm gonna recommend that, if you all are gonna go ahead and approve very high-density, that we're gonna make this earthquake, earthquake-proof, because we're talking about many buildings going up in West Jordan. You didn't want Sugar House Factory because it wasn't earthquake-proof. All right, folks, you're gonna do high-density, you're gonna do very high-density, opposed to what you initially campaigned for, I can't believe it. And, uh, you know, you, before you get elected, you campaign for one thing, and then you get in office, and you think, oh, I'm in office now, I can change my mind, the folks don't remember, won't remember. Well, I remember. And I'm just saying, if you're gonna go very high-density, I'm requesting earthquake, go ahead, make it expensive, do it, the, the builders have to do it, I'm sorry. We are, we're not, we are earthquake country. That's been said, the fault is right along Salt Lake County, we know it's gonna happen, we don't know when or where, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna request a million percent, if you're gonna go very high-density, it's gonna be earthquake-proof. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish you to speak on this public hearing item? Yes, please.
Uh, just my two cents worth. Um, I do have a little bit of a problem of, of the constant change, and it seems like, uh, since I've been coming to these city council meetings, majority of it's been to very high-density. Looking at, uh, the map, though, um, it's, it's kind of a two-edged sword, because it is kind of a, an oddball spot. Um, one thing that did come to my mind when I was reading this report was, uh, and, and I have a little bit of experience with, uh, with care centers, and, um, one of the things that comes to my mind is, is being a little nervous that that's right, sitting there right next to Redwood Road. Um, unfortunately, I was, uh, a witness to a, uh, an individual that got away from one of the care centers over on Sixty-second and was killed on Redwood Road trying to cross it in the early morning hours. Um, I guess maybe, maybe in the planning part of it, to be able to put up some, either some landscaping, whatever, to kind of help keep the residents in there, it, it's a, it's not an easy thing, uh, you know, contrary to what some people may think, they do occasionally get away and they do, um, they do cause a few problems. And so, I, I'm a little bit nervous about having a care facility so close to Redwood Road. Likewise, I have a son with disabilities that, uh, actually went to this junior high school, and he got away from them on multiple occasions, um, even as far as to go across the pedestrian bridge to the far side. So, it is not out of the realm of possibilities that, um, that we could be setting them up. So, I, I ask that you, uh, in your planning of this, if you decide to go through with it, that, uh, that great care be taken to protect those individuals through either walls or landscaping or somehow. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please. Would you please state your name and address?
Good evening. My name is Terry Timson. I actually live in Harriman, one four eight one four, South Clearwater Drive. I work for Jordan School District, and I'm fortunate enough to supervise the schools in the West Jordan feeder system. So, I have particular... So I have particular interest when we speak about Majestic and West Jordan Middle School. Appreciate your careful thought about this project and would just also ask you to be reminded and have great evidence that you've been cautious in the past. As well as we have construction projects like this that are large of nature, that are very close to schools, especially our elementary school. We have a lot of children walking to school in that area. So if you can, you know, as you move forward to make decisions, just always remember that safety factor as well for our young people as they come and go each day to school. And, you know, we do actually, I know the principal, Majestic, would be thrilled to have something in that field that's in front of the school. It will be developed and it will make that area appear to be nicer. We're putting a nice sign out there on Redwood Road. That indicates that Majestic Elementary is tucked back up in there. So we're trying to also improve that area as well. But appreciate your efforts in the past and just ask you to be very mindful of those safety concerns during a construction period like this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I will close the public hearing portion of item seven A and return to the council. Councilmember Haga.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I do have family member, members and a member that actually lives in a facility like this. And they're very, very professional, very clean now. I think that some of the codes that have been, you know, made makes this a good land use. We're deciding today really whether this is good land use for us. We've heard some safety concerns and I'll tell you, I'm sure that will, our police departments already noted that. Because our children are our first priority as far as safety. And now so the residents, hopefully that's a concern, you know, because a lot of people have to mention things that live in this thing. But it is high density just because these folks need to be together. They have to be supervised by medical professionals. So I see this as a good land use. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. Just briefly. I want to express a concern, not necessarily for the zone but for a future date, but it's more so that the developer will be aware of that upfront, one of my concerns. And that is just adding another ingress egress on the Redwood Road. Especially when you have the school to the north has one right next door. You have the Vet just to the south and on the other side of the Vet, you have another school entrance and exit. And just adding another one there is adding to the complexity. Right, just going into this with respect to the zone, the rezone. I am favorable towards this specifically because we know we have a need for senior housing in this community. And of all the places to put it, it's had great access here for, specifically from Redwood Road to the freeway to the north. I like that. It's a good place for the valley, for senior living. So with that being said, I would be favorable towards this rezone, but I just want to express that. That transportation issue, I don't know if there's something they could work out with a driveway sharing agreement with the district or something, or maybe the vets to the south or anything. Just some things they move forward, something that, just to think outside of the box rather than just coming up with another driveway. Because it's kind of a death trap going down Redwood Road. Thank you.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of thoughts on this one. One of my concerns, I brought this up repeatedly in the past, one way is that way our professional office space. However, in this case, I really don't see how professional office could be reasonably worked in there. And that's part of the reason why, why I think I'm favorable towards this. I think it's a really odd parcel and a really interesting position. And I don't know that there are many uses compatible. I think this one's probably one of the most compatible uses possible. So at this point, I think I'm favorable towards this. The other thing that I would bring up, dovetailing in with Ms. Timson's comments. For whoever does the development or when things are reviewed, if we could please remind them to be especially cautious of the children. If there's anything going on even during the summer, there's the summer school lunch program. So we want to make sure that they're aware of that. There are still a high number of children in the area even during the summer. So please don't think that if something's being done, then they could lower their guard for that time period.
Councilmember Southward.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a procedural question. Are we looking at a, it looks like an amendment to the future land use map and a rezone? Can that happen in one step or we look at the multiple motions? Is it both or is it just the one?
We would recommend two motions.
So we do need to do this in two steps. Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Councilmember Southward.
I take that back. That's not all I have. I'll go ahead with step one or something. That's what I said to you. Council, based on the findings set forth in the staff report and upon the evidence and explanations received today, I move that we approve of the City Council amendment, the future land use map as outlined.
Second. A motion by Councilmember Southward and a second by Councilmember McConaughey. Discussion?
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Haga?
Yes.
Mayor Roll?
Yes.
Councilmember Southward?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Vote passes six in favor.
Mr. Yockin?
I guess. No real responsibility. I'll do it. Council, based on the findings set forth in the staff report and upon the evidence and explanations received today, I move that the City Council rezone approximately four point oh four acres of property. As outlined in our staff report.
I'll second that as well. We have a motion by Councilmember Southward and a second by Councilmember McConaughey. Discussion of the motion? I just have the same comment that's been already, this is one time you'll see me vote for very high density. I agree. But I think there's a great need in the community for this type of senior. Yes?
I don't think we need to belabor that fact, but it does, it's worth mentioning that I would fall in the same case. When I visited the site today, looking at that, wondering what you could put, establish between the two schools and Vet and what have you. And this seems like it's a, it's a good fit. As much as we tried hard to balance out the housing stock in our city, this is a good fit. So I agree with those comments.
Okay, let's go.
Mayor Roll?
Yes.
Councilmember Haga?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Southward?
Aye.
Vote passes six in favor.
Public hearing item seven B. Receive public input and consider for approval ordinance fifteen dash zero eight. Amending the two thousand nine West Jordan Municipal Code, Section thirteen dash seven C dash six. Amendments to the land use map removing finding B from the general plan amendment findings in the zoning ordinance. Citywide applicability.
Mayor and council, we have findings in the zoning code that help guide the city with amendments to the general plan. There are six in total and one of them we refer to as item B. This item has been challenging somewhat for this Planning Commission to find recommendations and findings, make findings. In preparation of recommendations to the City Council, you serve as the legislative. You serve as legislative decision makers on these things. Generally, they apply both to map amendments and text amendments. This one is specific to the general plan, future land use map. And so after some discussion with the Planning Commission, staff put together a proposal to bring this forward. To just delete it from, from the list of criteria. Planning Commission had quite a debate. I'll turn the time over to Greg and let him give us an update on some of the discussions that took place at the Planning Commission.
You assume I have that good of a memory, Tom? I have on the power projector screen up here, the six findings that are listed. As Tom had indicated, this is, this is probably, finding B is probably the finding that gives staff the most trouble when we're writing a staff report. The reason that is because it, it kind of is redundant when compared to the rest of the findings. And also what it kind of assumes as well is that one size will fit all when we're talking about an amendment to a change to the land use map. And like Thomas said, most of these requests do affect a request for a future land use map change and not specifically general plan text or anything like that. As Thomas said repeatedly, particularly in the past couple of years, finding B has caused consternation and confusion amongst the planning commissioners. Who are, they're just simply trying to adhere to the code. And this one asks a question as to whether this is specifically a good site. Rather than taking the city as a whole as a region, as to whether it's a better fit for the city. More often than not, we always have to negotiate a good use around finding B, the question that finding B asks. So because of, I don't want to say it's confusing. It's really not confusing. It's just when you're trying to apply the code to a specific question like this, it can be, this, the question that finding B asks could be interpreted two ways. And those two ways can always lead to a negative finding, at least from one or many planning commissioners. And that's not what we want as staff. We want everybody to be on board completely or not. When we request or recommend a positive of a future land use map amendment, we want all findings to be applicable and positive. Not have one outlining out there and that's what finding B does in some cases. On February seventeenth, Planning Commission did vote five to one to forward a positive recommendation to the City Council. In our staff report, as you can see in your own report, we do recommend that the City Council approve the proposed text amendment as recommended by the Planning Commission. I hope I didn't confuse anybody.
One of the items I would add is the Planning Commission discussed an option to reword finding B. But failed to come up with, with language to replace it or amend it. So the vote ultimately was to move forward with deleting it. And there may be, you know, there may be, when, as the cities grow and they become bigger and bigger, this finding probably is less applicable. Because there may be some sites within the community that, that may be viable, but they're not in the region or the market area. Where they're specifically desired or, or where the market would, would drive them.
Questions? Yes, Councilmember Haga.
So it's more of a definition. Can you, can you define development pattern?
Can I define development pattern? I guess you're going to have to, you'd have to frame it a little bit.
It is a development pattern.
Well, I can define it. I think that, you know, the development pattern would, would fall into an area of what is the next? What is the next wave of development likely to take place within the community? It could be expansion on, you know, on the fringe of the infrastructure that the city has today. Or it could be an infill area. I think that's, it's probably subjective. But, but I guess in context where we looked at a layer of historic maps, we could show where the development patterns have been taking place.
Other questions? Thanks. We'll now open the public hearing portion of item seven B. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? Please.
I guess I'm on my roll tonight. Steve Jones, thirty-two, thirty-four west, sixty-nine, twenty south. I don't necessarily look at making somebody do a second think is a bad thing. When it comes to changing land use maps, I don't want to make it easy. To me, if they have to think about it and they have to, I don't necessarily look at it as a bad thing to say that it's a five one vote or something along that line. So if the problem isn't within the text, then correct the text. But I think the intent of item B is still applicable and I recommend that you leave it in place or fix the text. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I will close the public hearing portion of item seven B and return to the council for discussion and motion. Councilmember McConaughey.
Quick question on this one. Tom, do you know how many times this criteria has been cited for a no vote?
I don't have that up the tip of my fingers. Do you, Greg? No, we probably don't. We can get that, I can have our staff put some statistics together if that would be of interest.
Do you recall this being used as basis for a no vote? I, at least with the City Council, I don't recall this one being invoked.
I don't know that it's been used to drive a majority vote. But it has, it has caused some split votes.
A motion would be in order? Councilmember Southward.
Thank you. I do not have a motion at this point. But I'm just a little, I'm still trying to take in as I thought about this after I've read it. And I'm just not certain I'm to that, when I'm ready to strike this. I haven't thought this is a problem in, in the seven plus years I've been on the council yet. Doesn't mean it isn't, but I'm just a little hesitant here. There's just, you know. I'm stalling with the time here. I'm just trying to work all this out. So I'll be quiet and listen.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. Tom, I appreciate your articulation of what the development pattern is. I hadn't thought of it quite like the way you described, I hadn't thought of it like the way you described it up until just then. And I think that if we're looking at this in the context of amendments to the future land use map. It does make sense to look at some of these changes in the way development happens. We've seen a lot of changes in housing. We've seen changes in, I mean, we used to have a whole lot of manufacturing and industrial. Now that, that market's kind of changing. It seems appropriate that we consider those items when we're looking at changing the future land use map. And I'm not sure that's clearly covered in the other criteria, but I'm not sure it's clearly covered in criteria B either.
Yeah.
I think I'm more in favor of retooling the verbiage to be something a little bit more concise along with the idea that you earlier expressed, rather than tossing it out.
Maybe I can give an example. Let's say, for instance, and this is not the case by the way, but just hypothetically. There was a policy in the general plan that specifically said the community is focused on. the community is focused on creating more sites for hospitality uses, motels and entertainment and zoning that would bring in visitors from outside the city. But yet, the land use map did not reflect enough areas within the community to achieve that goal. You might, you might use item B to specifically make a finding that we need to make a change to the land use map to do so, to meet that goal. I don't know if that helps, but that might be one way to view it. Keeping, you know, and the way it's constructed, it's with the cascade of A through F. You know, it has, it has all of those working in concert with each other.
Councilmember Southworth.
All right, I'm still not ready for a motion, but I just want to throw this out to the council. I don't know, kind of the conflict I'm going back and forth in my head here is is we have this idea of our general plan, and we put a lot of time and a lot of effort into this. And we want to try to follow it, and the future land use map is part of that. And so keeping that balance of, you know, static is supposed to rely on document, no situations change and what have you. I'm struggling with that, that aspect of it. I don't know if anybody else is as well, but that's really where it's coming down to me right now. Like, I'm struggling with that there. We put a lot of time and effort. And so, you know, having this in and out, and how does that affect that?
I, I may be on the minority here, but I move to approve.
I just need to say say.
We have a motion by Mayor Rolfe and a second by Councilmember Hagan. Discussion. Yes?
Thank you, Mayor. I think I'm going to oppose this, just because I don't feel the need to change this or get rid of it at this point. I wouldn't mind revisiting it, looking at it in more depth to try and better determine if we can more effectively use this in our decision-making criteria. But I'm not ready to throw it out right yet. So I would, I would oppose the motion.
Councilmember Hagan.
I agree to concur with Councilmember McConaughey.
Could I ask one question, Staff? How many times, just approximately, do you think this has become an issue, either Bob or Greg? I mean, I'm not gonna hold you to it, but has it been?
Yeah, I'll just say it's been more common more recently than it has ever in the past. But ever since I've been here, we were writing reports, just assuming that this, everything was looked at in a more global type of fashion. But more recently, item B, finding B, has been focused on specifically. There's something I'd like to say about finding B. It's, the reason it's so hard for us to write a report, we can't go out as staff, or even a purchaser, and find all those other sites that might be optimal. They might not be on the market. And like Tom said, there might be an instance where there's just too few of those land uses. So what we're doing is we're painting ourselves in a hole, or in a box, or whatever phrase you want to take from there. But what I hate to do with finding B is have us not be economically viable as a city because we're not going to change our land use because of the market. In certain situations where it calls out for it, a good example is tonight.
Councilmember Southworth.
As I understand it, by removing criteria B, it allows greater latitude, or I guess ease, for amending and changing the future land use map, correct? That's what we're talking about. And the reason I bring that up and why that makes me a little bit concerned, on one hand, I absolutely understand, and I guess that's why we're all struggling with this, is that it is, you have to have some latitude and flexibility and how the opportunities that are presented to you in what you do. But on the other hand, I have experienced since the recession, a great deal of pressure from, let's say, development for smaller sized homes and smaller sized lots. And say, we have to change all of this because that's just not what the market will provide, and we want to make the money now, whatever the case may be. And we want to, you know, this is what we have to do. And having a tool like this to slow that down, I see as beneficial. So what could double, so sometimes you say double edged sword, this really, really is. And that's where, that's where my struggle is right now, and I'm not inclined to support it yet. Because I would like to have, to be able to jump on those opportunities when they come. But I'd like to have a little barrier there, if you will, to slow down these changes that may be coming at us quicker than we would like when it comes to changing the land use that we fought long and hard. And we said, okay, what makes the most sense? And we worked with all our stakeholders and the landowners and our citizens. Everybody came together and said, and it may not be perfect. When you get that many people and try to make sausage, it's not going to be perfect. But we think we've come up with a good plan. If we can have something that acts as a little bit of a barrier of change there, that might not be a bad thing.
May I?
Please.
Thank you. There is another dimension, and I think Greg just briefly may have mentioned it, and it probably deserves some more attention. Because this was part of our discussion with the, with the Planning Division. And that is timing of land use amendments. Sometimes communities will put into their statutes that, that these land use amendments come forward at the same time, whether that be yearly, or half, or twice a year, or quarterly, so that there can be some rebalancing of the land use among all the changes that we do. And they'll notice, they'll put out notices, general notices in the newspaper to let property owners know that they can bring in their future land use map amendments all at the same time and have them considered part of the package. Now, the other side of that is, is you may see a large, a large economic development project, and they need to go fast, and they, they're on an extreme fast track. And you, as a council, want a safety valve to be flexible to accommodate that economic development project because it means bringing in a high number of jobs to your community. Now, there may be a way in land use law to bridge those two functions to address timing as they relate to this criteria as well.
Please.
There's one thing I'm hearing, and that's ambiguity that this sentence appears to have. And I'm wondering if maybe another option would be just to direct the staff to go back to the Planning Commission and understanding what this sentence is trying to accomplish, see if there's some rewording that can be done. And I believe that was shared a minute ago. And just bring that back as another proposal, so that it still continues to have the depth of research that you're looking for. Ben, that's what I hear you saying, is let's not shorten the list too much, but maybe an attempt to remove that ambiguity. Would that be, do you have an appetite for that?
Possibly, but maybe the ambiguity is what is needed.
You know, having dealt with this, much like Tom has for a number of years, sometimes if you make a sentence so convoluted that nobody can take the definitions of the words, I mean, you just asked two planners a minute ago what it meant. One said, I need more information. The other one says, well, here's what I think it is. If you make it so confusing that nobody can attach to it, that's where you're causing frustration and problems, from what I'm hearing. Therefore, get some more concrete language that creates that protection.
And maybe there's a balance to be struck. Now, too much, it's specific and, you know, and it's too much. Well, I think we open ourselves up to other issues and problems potentially. And so that, that area, I think, sometimes is useful as well.
Councilmember Hagan.
I would just, you know, we just selected some new planning and zoning commissioners, and I've read all their comments. You know, like myself, as a freshman, you know, it takes time to catch up. I'm thinking maybe we rethink this, but let the planning commission, because they're the ultimate. I mean, they're the ones that exercise this code and all. Maybe we get a little more feedback from them and get some of the freshman season a little more. From my, again, I think two of the votes were just because I didn't know, you know, that's my... So that's why I'm kind of opposed to this, or I'm opposed to the motion.
Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor. I do agree with Mr. Jones in a way. I believe that the land use plan certainly isn't written in stone, and it can be changed, and for the appropriate reasons. But I don't want to make it so easy for developers to come in and say, well, you know, this just won't fit here, so let's change the land use and make it easier for them instead of having them look for a different use or a different site. Like I say, it's not written in stone. It is there to be changed if needed. But I do have a problem making it easier for it to be changed when you work so long to get a land use plan. Thank you.
Let's vote.
Councilmember Southworth?
No.
Councilmember McConaughey?
No.
Councilmember Hanson?
No.
Councilmember Hagan?
No.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Rolfe?
Yes.
Go Phil Stuteport.
Item seven C.
Okay. Can I offer an alternate motion?
Please.
I would move that we send this item back to the Planning Commission for another bite at the apple. You could say that too, if you want. And to take a stab at rewording, instead of removal, but rewording.
We have a motion by Councilmember Southworth and a second by Councilmember Hagan. Discussion. See you in a moment. Let's vote.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Rolfe?
Yes.
Councilmember Southworth?
Aye.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Hagan?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Go pass this six in favor.
Item seven C. Receive public input and consider for increasing the salaries for the City Council members of the West Jordan as outlined in Utah Code ten dash three dash eight one eight, salaries in municipalities. We had a discussion on this two weeks ago. Councilmember Nichols had a great presentation here. After I reviewed some more of the cities that surround us and aren't near our size, I initially thought that we should move it to one thousand per month, but I'm prepared to go much higher than that, so. I guess any discussion on this item before we go to public hearing? Yes, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess, just as a preface to those who are in the audience, we did have a presentation last time as we weigh this out, but it's really just a matter of weighing out other communities and the strain that's put on council members. And particularly, it's of my argument that, that cities with more population, there's more demand on the council members. And more so in ours, a city of one hundred and ten thousand, we have four districts. There are four district council members who each get to parse that city into force and where you have two at larges and the mayor who have basically fourfold of responsibility of communication. It's, for me, I heavily weigh on, or heavily lean on the district council members to help fulfill our responsibilities. But anyways, we weigh this issue and we open this to public hearing. I'd like to hear input on that, if there is any, specifically with respect to the consideration for population as we look at this. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Hagan.
Again, since, you know, I think it's a delicate subject tonight because there's some, maybe perhaps it might be running for election. But on the other hand, I think you need to look at this as far as what the council is worth, you know. And I have colleagues that I've met and I've known for years that have, are in cities smaller, that spend as much or more time than what I do, but make twice as much. Now, twice as much to me is, that's still not enough, you know, to make a living. We can't make a living here. This is, this is a service. And I think this is a modest increase. I would propose fourteen hundred, really, where we should be comparable to other cities. There's other cities that are even higher than that. But I think that's a competitive wage out there. And then I look at it as, again, not disparage anything what other council members will be running, but attract other residents to these positions. Because it does pay some money, and there is a reward a little bit. And that is a financial one for your time, which frankly, really, an engaged council person can spend forty to sixty hours will be easy. So, especially during the legislature and other things. So, thanks, Mayor. That's just my comment before public hearing.
We'll now open the public hearing portion of item seven C. Who else wishing to speak on this item? Please.
May I, um, counsel? I know you all work very hard, and I know a lot of you work a lot harder than others. But that being said, I mean, I think some of you deserve twenty-five hundred a month. Maybe some of you deserve seven hundred a month. I don't know. But I don't know when the last raise was, but I know, it's just like being a teacher. You're a teacher because you get three months off, or because you, you work only a hundred seventy days a year. And then you have another, like a nurse, she works all year. Why is she a nurse? She's a nurse because she loves it. Not all teachers love teaching, that I know for sure. But I know that, as I say, I know from talking, I take my citizen right. I take a lot of phone time by a lot of you on the board. But I, I mean, I don't know what amount you want to raise it to. You said it's eight hundred, and then somebody said twelve hundred and fourteen hundred. So I'm not sure what, what the monthly, what you're asking for. But I do think you should definitely get something, because I know your heart is in it. So the award that you have is in your heart. You're here because you love the city of West Jordan. You're not in it to make any money. You're here because you want to serve from your heart. Now, a lot of you, well, I'm not gonna mention names. I'm not allowed to mention names, but I know a lot don't. But anyway, I knew, I know a lot that go way overboard. So I do definitely think you do deserve to raise whatever you decide is a hundred percent with me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Steve.
Thank you, counsel. Let me just start off my comments by saying I humbly agree that it's probably well past time to have an increase, just in the stuff that I've looked in the presentation that Councilman Nichols had last time. One part, though, that I am a little reluctant on is when it's tied to cost of living. I do not agree with that part of it. And here's the reason why. I had the privilege this last week to participate in the jury selection process, to go downtown and be a juror. Humbly speaking... Humbly speaking, my allotment was seventeen fifty. I just kind of find it ironic that when we look at our government officials, that somehow they, uh, seem to sometimes feel like they deserve more than what I am. Um, I am a constituent. Um, I live in West Jordan, I pay taxes in West Jordan as well as the state of Utah. I don't know about you, but I haven't had a pay raise in a couple of years. Um, and that seems to be the general consensus in most of the general markets. So when I start hearing things tied to cost of living, while I am a reasonable person and I think there's certain professions and certain things that really need to be tied to that, this is probably a case where I don't believe that is. Um, a few of you expressed that you didn't even know what you made when you went for this job. It, it is along the line of, uh, me serving on a jury. And it's just a, a little bit of a bitter pill that we need to swallow. I do though think that for the time that you use to, uh, travel and, and, and have to fulfill your, um, your responsibilities, that it shouldn't cost you money. And, and that's the way that, that I kind of look at it is if, and, and so when you set the figure is, I mean, whether it's, you know, going up to a thousand or going up to fourteen hundred, uh, to me, the way you look at that is you look at it and say, what is it costing me to fulfill my job? And, and if you have what it takes to fulfill your job and a little bit more, then that's probably the correct balance. Um, but I do, as a constituent, want you to come back to me. And, um, since you vote basically on your own pay raise, I want you to be accountable to me. So every time that comes up, I want to hear about it. I just don't want it to happen automatically. Thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing portion of item seven C. Councilmember Southworth.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I would just point out that I don't think that any council should ever get a raise until after thirty years. After every thirty years, we're only at twenty. No, I'm kidding, that's a joke. Um, to kind of express that, that, that's a long time. Um, but one concern I do have, I'm going to raise the same concern I did before, and, and it was just expressed again here, is that I, I, I have, I have some concern when we tie it to a cost of living. Um, you know, especially when, when, you know, elected officials, you have control of the purse strings and, and, and that. I, I, I think that probably is not appropriate. It's hard to do this, that's why it's been twenty years. I think it's that way by design. And, and I would, I would hope that, uh, whatever outcome we have here tonight doesn't include the, uh, the cost of living that, that's just automatic, that's just not... And I think last time I likened it to our property tax, the truth in hearing we have to go through, that's very difficult by design. So that, so the elected, um, body and the government has to come to the citizenry and say, and defend the decisions and say, this is what we've done, of being held accountable, and it's on purpose like that. And I think it's the same, this should be in the, in the same vein. So if, if that was stripped, I would be happy. If that was stripped from this, uh, proposal, thank you.
Councilmember Hagan.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I just, I want to just bring up some facts first of all. First of all, this is a public hearing, so, um, one of our residents, that's what we're doing, we're saying, you know, we're here. You know, this is what we think, so we appreciate the comments. And that's the, following the law, having a public hearing, increasing our wage, if that passes, the body has to prove that. But I, I want to talk about some facts that I learned. You know, we belong to the Utah League of Cities and Towns. And I've been, I've been getting more active and learning things that city government should do and has to do as far as laws, um, whether it be from the legislature or, you know, in our districts and thing. I attended a meeting last fall, I put, I put the cap on, and I stopped by the Utah Retirement Service, you know, and chatted with them and, you know, a lot, lot of our employees are under that system, which is the state retirement system. And what I learned is I picked up a brochure and I've given that to the city manager, actually in the HR directory, director. And it, it defined what a city council person is. We're elected official, but we're to be treated as a full-time employee according to the URS. Now, what, what does that mean? That means that the state thinks that we're full-time. And so I, I would just go out and tell you we are. Our code even talks about we are to receive the same benefits as our employees. Now, that doesn't mean wage, but that means retirement. And one of the facts that I learned from the URS is the, the, uh, council member has to make to qualify under the URS nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Now, why do I remember those numbers? I just do. But I've shared that with our city manager and our HR director. I've showed him actually my retirement charts, it's nothing secret. We don't make that, there's not, we're not getting rich off retirement. But still, it's a fact that we have to follow the laws. And so at the bare minimum, I would suggest to this council that we, we at least follow that law, which is nine seventy-seven, which we rounded out up to a thousand. But that's a fact, we need to follow that. And I brought that up to HR and to the city manager. I appreciate council member, um, Nichols, do, I mean, he did a great job in, uh, ma- making analysis of other cities. I, I appreciate that effort, that took a lot of time. So I'm a proponent, what the amount is, I'll, um, accept because I did, I ran just to run, to serve. I believe in the city and want to see it grow and it's not the money. But I think if we want to attract some other candidates, it does cost money to run. And as a self-funded candidate, you know, I, I won't break even this year. So, you know, there's some expenses come into this job too, so, thanks, Mayor.
I have a motion, if there's no other comments. Um, first of all, I'd like to state that I have dropped the COLA off of my first, um, um, proposal a couple of weeks ago to this. And, um, I have looked at all, all the cities that, Councilmember Nichols and several others, um, what the rate is. And to me, it's kind of an insult to have our great city pay eight hundred and fifteen dollars for what you're required to do. Nobody wants to vote for a raise. I'm not doing that now for myself, but I believe that based on the prices of fuel, the use of cars, the being available twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, we even have meetings on Saturdays, uh, many times, I believe that my motion should carry tonight, so I will make it now. I move to direct staff to prepare an ordinance amending the two thousand nine West Jordan Municipal Code Title One, Chapter Four, Compensation of Members of the City Council. Increasing the city council members' monthly salary from eight hundred and fifteen dollars to fifteen hundred dollars per month effective January one, two thousand sixteen. Councilmember Southworth.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I thought long and hard about this and, and even joked a little bit about the, the thirty-year remark I just made to, to, to just to kind of bring a little light to how long that really has been, but I still haven't come to a level of comfort, um, to doing this. And, and, and you know, and, and this may not be fair, but from my own personal experience, I, I shared that I didn't even know that I got paid when I first ran. I had no idea, that was that ignorant, let's say that, naive, didn't know. Um, so I didn't do it for that. And, and, uh, you know, and, and for me, it's not about the money. And I know it's, and I'm not saying this for anybody else. And, and it, you could go either way in this, I would grant you go either way on this and it's completely justified. But for me, I'm just not there yet. I don't, I don't want to set, I don't want to get close to where people are doing this for the money. I don't think this gets us there. You wouldn't do this for the money. Um, you can go work at McDonald's and make more money. If that's what you want, money, go work at McDonald's. But I'm just not there yet, so I'm, um, not in favor of the motion.
So, quick point of order, did we have a second?
We don't have a second. Oh. Now we have a ca- uh, a motion by Mayor Ruff and a second by Councilmember Hagan. Now we have...
Yeah, I apologize.
I thought you were going to second a motion, but we're speaking against it. Let me just make one statement and then I'll go to Councilmember McConaughey. West Valley City, who is a city just larger than ours, that I believe we will overtake in population in the next decade. And obviously, this hasn't been changed in twenty years, so probably won't be changed now that there's no COLA. Uh, pays their council members fifteen hundred and sixty-eight dollars, thirty-four cents a month with the same basic package, you know, that's, uh, available here. And again, I'd like to state that, you know, we're a much better city than anyone else. Oh, Councilmember Hagan. Oh, excuse me, we had you, we, did you, I, I told you you were going next, sorry. Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure if I'm speaking for the motion or against the motion, uh, as I agree with pretty much everything that's been said tonight. I, I, I really don't think it's necessary to compare ourselves to the other cities as far as pay of council member goes. Um, I, I don't get any gratification from knowing, uh, where my pay lies in respect to what the pay is of other council members of other cities, nor do I, I think that really reflects on, um, the importance or significance of the job that we perform. However, I do know that serving on the city council takes a toll on you that when you're first running for office, you really don't expect. Um, it's taken a significant toll on, on my family, uh, both in time. Uh, you find yourself in a lot of meetings, uh, multiple nights a week. And it takes away from your family time, also causes your, uh, family to, wife has to worry about taking care of kids. It prevents her from doing other things that she'd otherwise be doing. Um, and then also, uh, sometimes just distress after meetings. On occasion, I'll run home and I'll be all excited because I felt like we've made significant changes to the direction of the city. And I'll be up for hours, um, talking about the good things that we've done. And then other nights, I'll be sharing some of my frustrations about where I think we're going the wrong direction. And, and it does take a significant impact. The financial compensation does help dull that impact somewhat, although it certainly doesn't come close. Um, it's been brought up, I think it was, I can't remember if it was Councilmember Nichols or Councilmember Southworth that said, when you look at the number of hours we work, uh, we're probably lowest on the scale in the city. Uh, we're definitely below, uh, the crossing guards, not to diminish what they do, they have a very important function. But I, I, I don't know that the pay is commensurate with the work that's required of us. But in this position, I'm not sure that it should be. And, and that's kind of the dilemma that I have. I didn't jump into this for the pay, I also wasn't really sure what it was until after I got here. Um, but that wasn't why I, I wanted to serve on the council. I'm hesitant to make a change because it has been so long and I don't want that to become the focus. Um, so I'm grateful you removed things like the, the COLA. Um, when we do make changes, it's, it's kind of a big dilemma. I want to make sure that there's plenty of public, uh, eyes on it and it's not just something lumped in with the rest of the budget. I also would have thought that to be a, a conflict of interest where we give higher raise to higher cost, higher salary adjustment to staff so that we would also benefit as a council, that, that would have been a bit of a conflict. But I really don't know if I come down for this one or against it. I, I struggle to support it, I struggle to oppose it.
Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I again, didn't know what I would make, as I stated two weeks ago. Uh, I didn't get into it for the money and it's a good thing, but that's not the reason I got into it. Um, I got into it because I wanted to serve the city. I've lived here for, um, over fifty years and I just felt like I could, could help with my government background, whether I have or not, it may be a question in somebody's mind, but, um, as long as the COLA is removed, and I'm glad this wouldn't take effect until January first. That way, if we have new city council people, uh, we're not rewarding ourselves. If we are not, we chose, choose not to run or we not re-elected, we're not rewarding ourselves. And so I can support the motion where it doesn't take effect until January and there's no COLA. Thank you.
Other comments? Okay, let's see where it goes.
Councilmember Southworth?
Uh, no.
Mayor Ruff?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hagan?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
No.
Go pass this four to him, Hagan.
Motion, Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Nichols.
Move that we have a five-minute recess?
Second.
The motion is second, all in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none, five minutes only, please.
Because those residents, if that moves forward, they're going to be fired over here. And Reed also said that the UTA, UTA actually owns the, the grounds or has a basement or something. Yeah, that's what he said. So they might want to help too or somebody. Okay. Well, let me know whatever. Well, let me know what I write to the votes, according to the meeting for Marcella. If he wants to try to get that, that's bad, he's gotta hold on to the beat, probably have some information. If he would come to the meeting. He doesn't like Sabbath.
Just all done, thirty-four and twenty-two. And I signed it.
Train's on track.
I said, I left the letter in there because we still got to finish.
Okay.
For a presentation. I'll bring it to you in a little bit. We, we may be ready later.
Huh?
Is it just you or is it?
So I'll just put it at my desk tonight and get to you more. You can blow out here once, because I, I don't think. That's why I don't know. Try and get these five items done.
But I'm good, you know.
Okay?
Yes.
This is item eight A, discussion and possible action on resolution fifteen dash five-three establishing the Highlands Assessment Area Board of Equalization and resolution fifteen dash five-four establishing the proposed two thousand fifteen assessments for the Highlands Assessment Area. Brian?
Thanks, Mayor and Council. Um, as you know, this is, you've, uh, this is becoming your way sooner than, sooner or later. Um, back in April two thousand thirteen, um, West Jordan Council adopted a resolution um of a, of intent to designate and create an assessment area for the Highlands Development. Um, now that development is being built out there, it's time to um move forward and assess a, a fee. Um, the fee, the purpose of the Highlands Assessment Area is to provide funding for the maintenance of a, a higher level of maintenance um for the open space and other public improvements associated with the, the master development out there. Um, just a little history through a variety of different analysis and information gathering that I've, uh, worked with. I'm planning and others, uh, gathering this information. Um, for the remainder of, uh, the two thousand fifteen um year, maintenance with, with what we're, is now the city's responsibility out there. Maintenance right now is about nine thousand dollars for the remainder of the year. Um, when the uh resolution was adopted to create the assessment area, it was also adopted that three percent of this amount um would um come from developers and five percent would come from commercial businesses in that area that, that are encompassed in the um Highlands Assessment Area. Um, after, that leaves us with ninety-two percent um of the maintenance budget, which is about eighty-two hundred dollars. Um, which will be passed on to the residents, um, the, the current twenty-one residents out there right now. Um, again, there's twenty-one residents out in the Highlands, uh, with certificates of occupancy. Um, based on the number of residential units and the current information that we have, um, after running the numbers, um, the assessment was thirty-two dollars. Well, we know that isn't, uh, that isn't sustainable for a lot of families and, and it's, it's um not right. Um, so we went back and worked some more numbers and projected, tried to project it, build out what would maintenance would be based on the information that we currently have. And we came up with a fee of fifteen dollars per month per residential unit. Um, again, this will be used um in the higher maintenance level out there that's gonna be required out there and that was agreed upon earlier when the development went in. Um, again, we can, we can't um accurately uh foresee the actual cost of maintenance over time, nor can we uh ac- accurately foresee the number of residential units in the future. Um, what we do know is that if there's any overage collected in the future, it will be um put towards the next budget year and used for the ne- the following year of maintenance. Um, so I'll, I'll stop there and if you guys have questions on the assessment, then we'll go into the, the the Board of Equalization part of this. Um, so if you guys have any questions on, on the assessment fee that's, uh.
Now just only on the assessment part. Councilmember Hagan?
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, I really, it's really more of a ego question. It, you know, currently right now, there's a legislation on the Hill um changing the Assessment Act, and I don't know if we've addressed that concern with this.
I'll have Bob answer that when we spoke.
I asked him the other day about that, so he's got.
Councilmember, uh, HB one ninety, uh, is the bill you're talking about. It won't go into effect until May fifteenth. But it's primarily aimed at the creation of assessment areas and as Brian indicated, you've already created the Highlands Assessment Area. Uh, to be sure, we've borrowed several concepts from HB one ninety in doing what we're doing. For example, the notice to the homeowners, the establishment of the Board of Equalization. So we're gonna be in compliance.
And then, so, uh, Brian, again, I kinda already know the answer. So these residents are going in knowing that their homes will be assessed, correct?
Yes, just like Justin Peterson spoke earlier, they're told when they purchase their home that there is an assessment area. Um, from what I'm being told, the residents are asking when we're gonna create this. Um, right now, they're not aware of the fee, so I don't know where that's gonna go. Um, but this is, this is the fee we're gonna need to, to be sustainable. And, and going into this, realize too that right now, there's only twenty-one residential units out there. So we're only gonna collect so much money. There's gonna be a deficit there for a little bit until we get enough residential units in there to, to cover the full maintenance cost.
Uh, Brian, uh, just to be clear, this is what didn't happen in, I'm not gonna mention the name of the other development uh that was similar to this, because we've heard about it for at least eight years, I know. Um, this allows everybody from the very beginning, business and or residents uh, uh, the knowledge that they're in this and, and they're the ones that are gonna greatly benefit. The whole city will benefit, but uh, those adjacent will benefit greatly from this, so.
Yeah, yeah, from my understanding, again, I, as people are coming in commercial business too, I've been told they're, they're, they're made aware of this coming into this, moving into this assessment area that they will be assessed. And the maintenance has to be a higher level than what we currently provide throughout the city.
Right.
Um, and to do that, it's gonna be, it's gonna cost more, so. Yeah, I think it's.
I think it's done right this time, I'll just say that. Uh, Councilmember Southworth?
I may know the answer to this, but I'm gonna ask anyway. You, you, you threw out, well, you, you calculated about thirty dollars, what you said, and, and you backed that.
About thirty-two.
Thirty-two, back that back down to fifteen, do you anticipate, sounds like you anticipate that this will have to increase in future years?
Well, again, we, we project, thirty-two is unrealistic, okay? So we went back and kinda, well, let's project a build-out and see where we're at build-out. It came back roughly about fifteen dollars, if I remember correctly. So, charging it now, we're gonna have, as we build up, we won't have to keep going back and changing the fee. You see what I'm saying?
If, if we start earlier.
If we start earlier.
If, if I could, just to, to explain to you, what the thirty-two dollars would be is to maintain what's currently there and that would be paid by the twenty-one residents that are there. So with, when we went out to the fifteen, that would be to maintain what will be there eventually based on the the number of residents that will eventually go into that place. So we are going to, for the first couple of months, be short, but if we double the amount of residents in that time and and don't do any more open space or any more space in that, we'll be able to cover it and we feel like we can cover it with the fifteen dollars.
Backup, Ryan, you said thirty-two would cover what will be there, but fifteen will?
No, thirty-two covers what's there now if we assess that on the current residents as they sit.
Okay.
So, we know there's gonna be more residents as we go along for the year and that's where the fifteen dollars came from.
Okay, just to get through the year, not beyond that. Now I understand. Okay, so fifteen, and fifteen is enough. Uh, now let me go take it the other direction. Is that enough that if I'm putting in the fifteen a- as a resident, I have this expectation. I go into this and I'm sold that this is gonna have a higher level of, of service and parts. Is fifteen enough to produce what my expectation is or should it be?
Based on the current information that we're working off of, fifteen will be sufficient. Um, he- he- here's kinda where we're, we're, we're hitting the wall too. Once the development goes in, once it goes into warranty, it's ours. The, the landscape becomes ours as per legislation. So the landscape's in, but we don't have the residential units in. So there's, like I said, there'll be a deficit there for, until we get the residential units up to, to match our, our costs.
Is the assessment area, is an assessment area able to um borrow funds, if you will, from elsewhere to be able to pay back at a future date, if maybe?
Yes, the assessment area can receive advanced funds from the city and you can account for that and get paid back over time.
Okay. All right, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
What I'd like to do, if we could, is if, if you don't mind, just stand in there.
No, you're fine.
Brian, I, I'd like to address, you know, um fifteen dash five-four and then let, uh, Brian go into the five-three, if we could, so, uh, a motion would be in order at this time, unless anyone's inclined. I just don't wanna get, I don't want you to do the presentation and then get it concluded, okay?
I move the City Council to adopt and approve resolution one-five, five-four establishing proposed assessments for Highlands Assessment Area. All as explained by our staff report, I further move to notify the residents and businesses in Highland Assessment Area concerning the proposed assessments.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hagan. I will second the motion. Discussion. See you in a minute, so.
Councilmember Hagan?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Southworth?
For clarification, it was a move to, uh, motion to adopt, correct?
Uh-huh.
Yes.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Raul?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Go pass the six in paper.
I'm actually gonna have, I don't mean to put you on the spot, Bob, but I'm gonna have Bob explain the, the Board of Equalization.
I made you stand up there for nothing, you know.
Okay, one, one of the requirements is that these as, uh, proposed assessments that you've just approved will be noticed to the residents and to the businesses. And they will have, according to HB one ninety and the statute, they'll have thirty days within which they can make claims of inequity to what we are required to appoint, and that is a Board of Equalization. We've had experience with that in the county with your property taxes. That's the same thing they do. So what we're proposing is that this Board of Equalization be, uh, the city engineer or his designee, city finance director or his designee, and a member of the city council. Uh, by having a member of the city council there, we can go directly back to you, uh, to approve the assessments. So what we'd have to do is, uh, approve that appointment and then have one of the city council people, uh, appointed to that Board of Equalization. Then they will meet together, uh, announce when they're going to meet, to be here, to hear uh, equalization complaints. And then those dates will be provided to the residents and to the businesses so they know when they could come in and be heard.
Questions? Please.
And Ryan, I, I should ask when you were talking, so this board now, as, as part of the revenue we generated, it, will it go into the general fund? Or is it into a different?
No, it's going to have to be separately accounted for as the assessment area funds.
Thanks, Paul. I move to approve or adopt and approve resolution fifteen dash five-three establishing the Highlands Assessment Area Board Equalization.
Second.
I have a motion by Mayor Raul and a second by Councilmember Henson.
Mayor, is it required to, um, make those appointments at this time or can we do that at a later date?
What, what do you think, uh?
We'd appreciate it if you'd appoint somebody tonight.
I would speak up and say this probably, uh, not, probably not appropriate for myself or Councilmember McConaughey or Hanson, but maybe either the mayor or an outlet. I didn't say the, the fourth district possibly, but it could be, you know, political influence and what have you. You might want, we might wanna consider that either one of the at-large members or, or, um, a, a mayor and to do that and, and maybe the mayor even chat chat is very familiar with the area if you wanna do it or, I don't know, you guys go on a wrestle and figure it out, but that's my way of getting at it.
I'd be glad to do it if you want me to do it, you know, at least initially.
I'd just throw that out of the council. It's probably something we gotta consider. Maybe you guys can on a wrestle and figure it out.
Concur with the mayor.
Mayor?
Yes. Like, so adding the mayor, representatives in county, yes.
Just one other little item. I'm trying to look and see if it's actually in the body of yours or not, but Bob, you mentioned, uh, finance director and we treat Ryan like a director, but his title's finance manager. Just do we need to tweak that so we don't have a misunderstanding? Let's make sure we get that in the motion, that we make that modification. Sorry, Ryan, you lost your promotion tonight.
So Judy, will you keep your second if I'm named as the, uh, representative?
Yes, I will.
So, I have a motion, a second.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Raul?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Southworth?
Aye.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Hagan?
Yes.
Go pass the six in paper.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item eight B, discussion and possible action regarding draft transportation master plan update and update transportation capital facility plan. Wait.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Nate Nelson, our city engineer, is gonna make, uh, the presentation and introduce people. I just might mention that the next one, eight, eight, uh, C, Bill Wernowski will make that presentation.
Okay.
Uh, good evening, uh, city staffs have been working along with Horox engineers and A-Trans. We've been working on an update to the transportation master plan. Uh, the transportation master plan is something that we update and, and, uh, uh, revise about every five years just to reflect changes in, uh, projected uh, traffic volumes that, that come as a result of development and growth. Also, uh, reflects changes that have, that have happened as transportation projects have been completed over the previous years. And it, it gives us a chance to uh, update and set new priorities for tra- transportation projects. What we have tonight is just a progress report. Uh, you should have received a copy of the, of the, of the draft. I just wanted to emphasize that it's a preliminary draft. In the coming months and weeks, we'll be holding a, a, uh, public open house, uh, which is scheduled right now currently for April fifteenth and sixteenth, which we invite, uh, city council to members to attend. Uh, we'll be hosting the public and, and being able to answer their questions and receive their comments. Uh, we also plan to have a presentation to the Planning Commission sometime in May and, uh, we, we turn this back to the city council in June for final approval and ratification. So, uh, for tonight, again, this is just a progress report. I'd like to introduce, uh, from A-Trans, Joe Perrin. He's a, a transportation engineer as well as, uh, and also Stephen Lord with Horox. and also Stephen Lord with Horox, he's also a, a transportation engineer. And, uh, Bill Berenowski, our own traffic engineer is here and we can answer any questions that you might have. Uh, also, uh, again, we're, we're, we're also interested in any comments and you might have noticed that there's a comment sheet in your packet. Uh, we're interested in receiving your comments now as well as in the future at, at the, uh, public open houses, so, right now I'll turn the time over to, uh, Joe Perrin.
Thank you and good evening, um, actually Nate did most of the introduction, so we'll probably jump right in because we were told to take about ten or fifteen minutes, try to give you an update as to where we are and what we've recommended and then lead that into the capital facility plan. But really, that's what we're looking for is feedback, uh, concerns, questions, comments, that we can then make modifications for before we actually take it out to the open houses in April. So with that, I think we'll jump straight into the modeling, which I'll bring Stephen up to, to kinda walk you through the different, uh, maps and analysis that we think are critical in the, in the report and then we'll talk about the facilities plan and then we'll open it up to your questions.
Thanks, Joe, uh, Mayor, council, I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight to present, um, the, the work that we've been doing over the past few months. Um, I'm, I'm gonna show you a lot of maps tonight, um, hopefully you've had a chance to review these, this is a, just really a graphical presentation and I'll talk a little bit about each one of the maps, um, and, uh, and basically show you how the master plan works and, and try to tell a story of what we've been doing. Um, that's just a brief outline of what we'll do, we'll just go straight into it. This first map shows you, um, the locations around the city where we, we counted traffic. Uh, these are all twenty-four hour daily traffic counts. Um, the, uh, the numbers show you how many vehicles are on the road on the day we counted and then also the year these counts were taken. It's a combination effort of counts that we did ourselves, um, counts from previous studies within the last few years and then also counts from UDOT. This forms the basis of our, um, of our analysis. We have to get a good baseline before we can start projecting to the future, so that's what we did there. Uh, this is the existing roadway network. Um, the, uh, the lines on the map there represent different types of roadway, different jurisdiction of roadway. Um, the, the dashed lines are UDOT roads, uh, the solid lines are all roads owned by the city. Um, and, uh, the point of this map is different roadways have, obviously have di- different capacities. Um, the bigger the roadway, the higher the speed, the higher the capacity and, and again, when we're talking about capital facilities and whether we need to improve roadways, this forms the basis of that analysis. Um, level of service, this, this graphic represents level of service, this is really the measure of, of performance on any roadway section or at any, um, any intersection, so, when we go on to the next map, just keep this one in mind, um, the level of services are graded, it's graded from A to F, really depends on delay and free flow speed. Um, if you can drive as fast as you want on a roadway because there's no one around you, then you're at level of service A, um, and, uh, and that's, and that's great. If you're gridlocked and you can't move, that's level of service F, it's as simple as that. Um, it doesn't work the same way as school, level of service D is considered really good. So, um, again, bear in mind when you look at this, we're looking for level of service D. And what that really represents is a good balance between, um, mobility, access, and probably most importantly, funding. Um, and, uh, if we are, if we're trying to build for level of service A, then, then, uh, we're gonna have to find some money from somewhere and you're not gonna find enough, so. We, uh, we like to design for level of service D. Uh, I do wanna point out, there's a, there's a subtle difference between level of service D on a roadway section and at an intersection. Um, when we go to the next map, you might see some sections of roadway that has an acceptable level of service and you say, well, my goodness, I s- I sit at that light for three minutes. So the difference there is, um, level of service at an intersection is based on how long it takes you to get through that intersection, right? And on a roadway segment, it's really how many cars you can just fit in those number of lanes. The reason we distinguish those is that the fix for the problem is different. Um, when we have a capacity issue on a roadway section, most often it's either we're gonna build a parallel facility or we're gonna have to widen and add lanes. Um, at an intersection, that treatment's not always the, the solution, it might be as easy as, as installing a roundabout or a signal or it might even be easier in, in installing a left turn lane. So we have to make that distinction. So, with that, this is the existing level of service map. Um, green is, is what we would consider acceptable level of service C or better. Yellow is level of service D, again, acceptable, but something that we probably wanna keep our eyes on. And then red is what we would consider to be unacceptable level of, level of service E or level of service F.
Quick question for you. So as we're looking at the streets, we've got the different numbers on there, I'm assuming those are the counts, is that per, per day?
Yes, those are, those are daily, those are daily counts, yes, absolutely, good question, thank you. Um, and some of these are counts, some of these will come straight from the counts, others come from our simulation, from the travel demand modeling we do where, where we don't count on every single road. We use the travel demand model to simulate those other roads. So that's how, that's how we look today, hopefully this looks like the way it feels. Um, and when you're out there driving around the city, those are the intersections you see problems at and those are the roadways where we have problems. Um, the, the next one here, this is, this is essentially the solution, this is the proposed future street network for twenty forty. And I wanna really emphasize that this is a draft. Um, we've made no decisions at this point, this is just us looking at what's happening in the future, where we anticipate growth to be through our modeling, our travel demand modeling, um, and with input from, from city staff. These, this essentially is how your roadway network will look in twenty forty, if the plan is adopted in the future and all of the roadway improvements are built as we proposed and this will get you to a, to an acceptable level of service in the future in the mo- in, for the main, in, in the main, and I'll get to that. This map here shows you the capital facilities plan, this, this isolates the projects that need to be built. Um, solid lines represent capacity improvements, um, that essentially means new lanes, uh, that doesn't always mean widening. Sometimes that just means a striping change to add a lane or two. Um, uh, sometimes it does mean additional right-of-way purchase and each one of these projects has been looked at individually. The dashed lines show brand-new roadways that don't exist today, um, and they're either for connectivity or, um, for future development. And again, we split these out, the yellow ones you see are UDOT roads, the blue ones are city streets. Uh, and then this is, this is a similar map, this just shows intersection improvements, again, twenty forty, again, this is just a draft. Uh, but these are all the locations where we anticipate there, there will be a need for some kind of intersection improvement in the future. But that can take many forms, um, this doesn't mean we're building a signal, it doesn't mean we're building a roundabout, a lot of these may be just, um, turn lane improvements or, or uh, minimal widenings, but some will be full signals, some will be roundabouts. Uh, we haven't really made an attempt to identify which treatment is appropriate at each location, that's something that needs to be done on an individual case-by-case basis and we just know that the volumes at these locations, it will probably warrant something in the future. Uh, and then this is, uh, this is our future level of service map, so, assuming that everything is built that we proposed in the last two maps, um, this map here shows you the level of service in twenty forty. Now, there's still red on this map, um, and, uh, the reason for the red on the map is, uh, these roadways where we expect really high volume in the future, um, the, essentially the, the fix for those, we felt was so impactful and, and so far into the future that it would be inappropriate to say, um, that this is definitely gonna have to happen. For example, widening Redwood Road, um, that's such an impactful situation that we feel like it is, is much better to say in five years' time when we update this plan, let's look at this again, see if anything has changed before we start budgeting and deciding that we need to w- widen Redwood Road. Ninetieth South, um, same situation there. So that's why we still see some red on this map. Um, with that, I'll, I'll turn the time over to Joe and he's gonna talk about, um, the improvements and the cost of the improvements and where the funding is gonna come from.
Um, so while we're on this map, before we move on, I'd like to say, actually West Jordan's in fairly good shape, based on what we're proposing and, and the budget that we looked at that, that you'll wanna invest in for maintaining the levels of service that you want. It's also nice to point out that both Ninetieth and Redwood will, shortly anyway, both become UDOT facilities, so. That kind of, even though it's in your city and you have to push for it, most of the funding for any of those improvements will, will come from the state. So, to take a look now, I, I will point out the West Jordan city cost here is a little bit different, we had an error, so we've corrected it in the presentation, but in your packets, that number's a little bit different there for the two totals for West Jordan and the total cost. So just take note of that. Um, but when we take a look at what we did, is we looked at each of these facilities, we came up with a waiting schedule that applied not only safety and capacity, but other things like right-of-way, um, opportunity because other projects are planned there, whether it's a utility upgrade or something like that. And what we were able to do is then go through and wait each of the improvements, um, based on a priority schedule. And that allows us to look at both the intersections and the roadway segments and come up with kind of your ten-year plan. Because the idea here is we're gonna kinda come up with a ten, twenty, and thirty-year plan, because this is, this is over the next twenty-five years, I should say, to twenty forty. Um, that allows you then to go back and create kind of our, uh, our impact fees associated with that. So as you take a look here for the capital facilities plan and the improvement costs, we're looking at somewhere around West Jordan City, about seventy million dollars, again, over the twenty-five years. Um, when we take a look at the total improvements for the next ten years and those, again, that priority system that we kinda put in with our recommendations, we're looking at West Jordan, uh, needing to come up with about, uh, fifteen million dollars over the ten years, so that's about a one-point-five million dollar contribution annually. Again, so, we've talked a lot just about the transportation and, and the, um, kind of roadway capacities, but the master plan has a lot of other elements included in there. And so we just wanted to make sure that we identify methodologies for traffic impact studies, your access management, uh, corridor preservation techniques, trails, pedestrians, bicycles, et cetera, so there's a lot of other elements in there as well. So the next step is, and again, this has been updated as well, um, because originally the presentation that you got was, was potentially gonna come last month, so those dates have changed. But we're here right now to try to get some feedback from you, um, so that we're ready to make any changes that we can and have some open houses on April fifteenth and sixteenth to take it out to the community and let them provide some, some comments and feedback. Uh, we'll come back with the resolutions of those comments by the end of April. Plan to take it to Planning Commission for their review in May and then bring it to you for hopefully adoption in June. And so that's kind of the schedule that we're on right now. Now, that's our contact information, if you have any direct questions or something like that, we appreciate hearing all those. If you're still mulling things over and don't really have thoughts this evening, uh, we'd like any of that input that we can get. And with that, we'll open it up to any questions you might have.
Does anyone have anything this evening? Councilmember McConaughey?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, if you could go back to, I think, slide eight. One of the things I'm curious about on that one, there we, yep, right there. Yeah, uh, looking at this, we've got, uh, Seventieth South, uh, at about Thirteenth West, where it talks about widening to seven lanes. Is that just for that one section, is that all the way to Bangater? That's, that's something I'm.
That's all the way to Bangater, so the, the purple, purple line would be a city arterial, um, six to seven lanes. A key thing here is, again, this is wh- how the modeling came out, because as we did it, we think that's the demand. At this point is where a policy would kind of kick in and say, well, we're not doing that, because Seventy-Eighth and Ninetieth luckily could just be striping changes, we have full shoulders along there, so we would kind of be able just to re-stripe it. Seventieth is the one that if, if we take it to the level that the traffic demand indicates, it would be widening that road for sure.
Councilmember Hager?
Uh, just, uh, the traffic count, it's not, I really, I've read this report, it's a great report, look forward, or, to keep going forward, but just because we watch the traffic go back and forth and I'm intrigued with the numbers, when you see an intersection and you have, you know, twenty-eight thousand and on the other side of the intersection, is that basically almost, uh, sixty thousand cross traffic?
No, it, it, the, the count is a total two-way traffic on that leg of the intersection. So, so you, you could have a imbalance because people are turning at the intersection, but if you see a thirty thousand, that means we, if you put down hoses right there and you counted every car in both directions, there'd be about thirty thousand passing that point.
So if you wanted to try to get that total through the intersection, just. Well, the mayor and I have been quoting Seventy-Eighth South, would like to have that real number.
Which one, I'm sorry?
We know it's way up there, so, Seventy-Eighth and Redwood Road.
Yeah, uh, what's interesting is, um, Seventieth has actually become your bottleneck point because, um, they did the CFI at sixty-two in Redwood, so they're giving twenty extra seconds to Redwood Road. So essentially, they're getting eighty seconds of green time to get through that intersection, but we can only give it sixty at Seventieth because we have the traditional left turn movements. And so, when you look at kind of the corridor, that becomes the bottleneck point. And that's why we, uh, Stephen did a great job kinda pointing out that we wouldn't recommend widening Redwood Road necessarily because it's the intersections that are your controlling factor now. And the way to think of it is Bangater and Seventy-Eighth South, right? That was the bottleneck, but it wasn't the fix for it, it was the interchange, not widening anything on Bangater Highway.
Any other questions? Now, do we, oh, Councilmember Southwood?
Yeah, thank you, really quickly, not, not a question, but a comment, um, they, very well prepared, visually pleasing, did a great job on this. Um, I, I already put this in use, I met with some scouts last night, had questions about the city, we, we used this for our discussion. And, and they thumbed through and they looked at some of the costs and they blew their minds and they were, anyway, so thank you, great job on this.
If you have your time, send it my way, we'll give you the job.
What's, uh, did they have any other thoughts though, like, was it something, I'm always interested, my son's sixteen and so, always interested to see.
Oh, yeah, they fixed the whole thing, they fixed the whole thing for you, so I can just.
They told us where we were wrong, I appreciate that, we'll take their advice, yeah.
No, they were thirteen-year-olds, so, maybe.
Okay, do we need, uh, official, we can just keep moving forward with the schedule or do we need to have an official vote? Just direction to continue to move on the schedule you've proposed and.
That's great.
See how it unfolds as, uh, you know, the dialogue continues.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, sorry.
Just one last thank you, it was very, very appreciated to see the PowerPoint presentation included with the agenda in advance, so thank you for providing that to us, very much appreciate that.
You're welcome.
You can give Bill credit for that, that was Bill's idea, so, we'll take, we'll take.
Thanks. Item eight C, discussion and possible action regarding crosswalk improvements located at nineteen-sixty west, seven thousand south, Bill Berenowski.
Okay, I'm here to talk about the options for improving the crosswalk and I'm gonna be as brief as possible and run through those. And, uh, it's been a while since I've used one of these, let's see if I can get it, yep. So, figure one shows the existing crosswalk located on Seventyeth South between Redwood Road and Twenty-two hundred West, approximately half, half the distance. Um, this crosswalk's been in place for over ten years and, um, we scratch our heads, how did it get there? And we, we, nobody knows how it got there, but it's been in place for a long time and it, it's definitely due for a look, look at tonight to discuss if we, we can make it better, or one option is to remove the crosswalk. Um, there is demand for people to cross the, the Seventyeth South at this location. There's a park on the north side, bicentennial park, and, uh, there is, it is a long distance between Redwood and Road and Twenty-two hundred West with no crosswalk. And a diff- a long detour or a roundabout, uh, situation for the pedestrian to get from the north and the south side. Uh, the good thing is there's, the school crossings in this area are located to the west at, uh, Twenty-two hundred West, so there, there, it is a designated school crosswalk at this location and the school boundary actually, actually runs up, for Majestic Elementary runs up to Seventyeth South and, uh, those kids aren't, aren't having to cross. Um, existing crosswalk, if, if you're driving through quickly, you might not notice it's there. It's, uh, not very highly visible. And the good news is there is a street light over the crosswalk, so at night it is illuminated partially for anyone crossing. Uh, we, we had someone count traffic on Monday, uh, during, uh, at least five hours of the peak travel times and we counted two people crossing from the north side to the south at between four and five P M. And they were adults and they, they were very careful when they crossed. And when they did cross, they, uh, practically ran across the road. And they did, did not use the orange flags when they crossed. There's, I listed five options. There's, I listed five options to improve the crosswalk. Number one option is to remove the crosswalk. That can be done quickly. Number two, improve the visibility of the existing crosswalk. And we can do that by using paint, like in this, this photo of making it a zebra crosswalk, as well as adding warning bars. These are bars that look like the zebra paint and on the approaches for the through lanes to, to let people know they're coming up to a crosswalk. And we can also, uh, under recommended, or, uh, under option number three is install a rap, rapid rectangular flashing beacon. And we've got at least four of these in the city today that you can go and try out. And here's an example of one on a multi-lane, uh, arterial.
Bill?
Yes.
Now, the ones we have are not solar. These look like these might be solar-powered. The ones we have are connected straight to.
Yeah, all the ones we have so far are solar-powered, so they have a little panel on the top.
So the ones we have are solar as well?
Yeah, you can't see them unless you're up on a, in a helicopter. So they're, they're hard to see from the ground.
Okay, thank you.
I also recommended, um, a ra, a short raised island similar to this one in the median to protect the pedestrian when they cross at the crosswalk. Option number three or four is to install a hybrid pedestrian crosswalk. And this is a photo of a typical Hawk or hybrid pedestrian crosswalk. And we currently have two of these located in the city. To qualify for one of these crosswalks, you need at least twenty people crossing in an hour. And this, our, the study crosswalk does not qualify for a Hawk at this time.
Bill, could you just pause for one second?
Sure.
We need to extend the time by.
I move to suspend the rules.
Second. Motion by Councilmember McConaughey and a second by Councilmember Southworth. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Please continue, Bill. Sorry.
Okay, and the, the cost for these is at least ninety thousand. And the cost for the, the RRFB or Rapid Rectangular Flashing Beacon option is a lot less, only twenty-five to thirty thousand.
Bill, is, uh, are we proposing if we went with item three, um, to put the island in there as well?
I recommend it, but it's not required. Certainly, certainly could be done. It would be safer with the, the raised island. And we, we make it different than this one. It'd be, if a snowplow hit it, it would be plowable on all, all end, all directions. Or even if a car hit it, they would bounce off, hopefully. But it would be, it would create a little island for the pedestrian to, to wait if he had to.
You know, Bill, if I could, as well, I wondered about that. And does that give a false sense of security to someone to come to a center? Because I like these, if, if, if you've got refuge in the middle of the road. But do I have a false sense of security because if a car could go through that, not notice? Am I at risk? And, and how would you design that so that it could, or can you?
Yeah, um, it's a good point. We, we wouldn't put one of these in if it, if we didn't have enough width to put it in. If it was less than five feet wide, it would be invisible to a car. And we'd definitely paint it yellow and put reflective material on it and some flexi-posts on it so you can see it in the snow. It's more visible.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Could, could you back up to the, I want to show two things. Number one, the overhead map. And then also the picture that was taken. So right here, you've got the crosswalk right about where that seven is, just on the west side of this road right here. So if we were to do a cement island in there, that would prohibit traffic from turning out and turning to the west, uh, which would be very difficult. And then, uh, while we're at it, if you could jump forward one more to see the picture. I mean, you can see we've got the two lanes of traffic, uh, going, heading west. So that's typically where you have the most issue. If you were to try and turn out here and you had a concrete barrier, I think that might cause more problems than anything. And real quick, while we're here, I'll also point out that this picture's taken, uh, on the opposite direction of traffic. When you're going with traffic and you're over here, this sign is obscured behind these trees that are quite a distance down. It's even less visible in real life when you're on the proper side of the street than, than the picture would be there to leave.
So one of the things we talked about was we might have to remove a couple of trees. We'll have a flash, a flashing, uh, RRFB on the side and as well as one in, over the lanes on, on a pole, mast arm mounted over the traffic. So, uh, when you have two lanes of traffic, sometimes a side-mounted sign can be blocked by a truck. And so we feel that we need not just one, but two of the flashing, uh, s- signs and the, their beacons for this, especially this direction, but I think it wouldn't hurt for the other direction of traffic. That island that I proposed would just be to the west of the crosswalk, and it's correct. A lot of people use this lane to get into traffic and, uh, use it kind of as a suicide lane to get going westbound. So there is a negative, uh, impact for that island. But is, when, anytime you do a project like this, there's balance between the, the cars and the pedestrians. So do you want to give more balance to the pedestrian or to the cars? So that's a good, that's a good, uh, that's a good example of giving the pedestrian a huge benefit instead of the cars. So anything we do on a road like this, we're, we're gonna have impacts to traffic. But if, uh, if this flasher only goes off fifty times a day, that impact's gonna be pretty slight. And hopefully it'll be, uh, less of an impact than a pedestrian getting hit by a car. So, uh, the last option, number five, is this example, this is on Redwood Road, at about eighty-four-hundred South at the school. And they've got a full pedestrian signal. And to qualify for one of these signals, you need at least a hundred pedestrians crossing the, the street in the, in the peak hour. So it's very hard to meet to qualify for one of these full pedestrian signals. With that, if you have any more questions, or if you've got.
I just have a comment, if I could, Bill.
Sure.
This is more a comment and question. The, the light that's similar to this on Seventyeth that's west of twenty-two-hundred, that we put in a few years ago, it's not exactly, it's not this typical. But, uh, I just wondered, the one at grade that you, the flashing one, I, um, I've watched cars run this one on Redwood a hundred times. And as long as the tra, uh, the crossing guards are there on Seventyeth at just west of twenty-two-hundred, no problem. But I've, I've seen kids nearly hit on the, uh, on the off times, many times, or even here regardless of the light. So I just wondering what your opinion professionally is of the, uh, I like the island approach because that gets people to slow down, I think, a little bit and shows them there's something there. And I like the lights down lower, I believe, but I imagine your opinion.
So, um, studies have been done, and we've done some in our city, and we can, we probably should do more, of how effective each of these alternatives are, how, what percentage of cars will actually stop for the pedestrians. And at locations like in front of the high school, they're, they're, they're very effective for stopping cars because there's so many kids. If you've got a location where there's maybe ten people a day crossing, they're gonna be a lot less effective. And you have a potential for people running through, through the light and not stopping for it. When you compare a Hawk, the stopping percentage of a Hawk to the, the Rapid Recta, Rectangular Flashing Beacon, the Hawks, a little, it's a little bit higher than a, than this beacon. And I think it's, has to do with some with the color of the light. This light's kind of a bright white, slightly yellow light, and it's LED. It's, it's similar to a police car, uh, light. Whereas this one, when you see a red light, people under, seem to understand red a lot better. So that's another, uh, thing to consider, which, which is gonna be more effective and work better.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember South.
You know, I would just add, given what you said, at the same time that the one that you mentioned, did another one up on forty-eight-hundred West and seventy-four-hundred South, where we had a peaking in the road and almost made that, basically made the, the crosswalk invisible. And after we put that in, I don't know how effective that really wa, I mean, it is effective for a few folks, but i- it just doesn't get the attention. And that's why earlier I brought up these flashing ones, because as long as if you can take these super flashy lights and put them on these overhead hangar, you might get the effect you want. But the bulbs that just turn on and off and on, you know, they're, they don't catch your attention as opposed to what we're looking at right here with these high-intensity LEDs that are directed at traffic and flash. So I, I would just say too, that, that, I don't know that, that, that over, even though it gets, gets lights over the traffic, I don't know how effective they are.
Right, that's been my experience as I've witnessed. Uh, Councilmember Hagan?
Yep, Bill, um, you know, on this, I, I know there's one of these on West Temple and it's by, uh, oh, by those, probably about South Temple, West Temple. And they have this island, and I, I just, because I was up there, up at their show, I witnessed a lot of people taking refuge on that island. Of course, that might be a three-lane road, too. I'm not sure. But, you know, I, I'm for, I like the visibility of this. I, when I've driven by there and I've also walked through there, this is very visible. And more so than, and I walk my dog along that one on Redwood Road, that's, even when you press the button, it's scary. You gotta make sure three lanes of track, traffic see you, so. But I, whatever way we can create a walkable community, I'm a, a proponent. So I, I'm gonna go by your judgment what the best is.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, a couple other thoughts. First, first of all, uh, the reason I brought this up last council meeting, asked if we'd be okay to have staff present is because the current condition, I don't feel is safe. None of the residents feel safe. I think the traffic count, or excuse me, the pa, count of pedestrian crossings would have been much higher had people felt safer in this crosswalk. This is a interesting area that has some developmental concerns. Can you go back again to the picture of the map? I wanna, oh, okay, so right here, uh, we can't see all of it, but this little neighborhood up here, it's a horseshoe-shaped neighborhood that has approximately sixty-five homes. If somebody wants to leave this neighborhood and travel east, typically, i- if you try and come out here, you're gonna be waiting a little bit longer because you've gotta come across two on, oncoming lanes of traffic in order to turn west. So a lot of them go over to the other side, which would put them right here. A concrete median would be problematic for those folks, for those sixty-five households trying to turn out. Additionally, for the folks who live in this subdivision right here, the concrete median trying to come out and turn west, that would be problematic. You can see this, this neighborhood luckily does have a secondary, uh, exit down here. But this top section does not, you'll recall, this is the same neighborhood where we were talking about issues with the parade and the whole neighborhood being blocked off because there was no additional access. So I, I worry a little bit about further complicating in and out with that, uh, cement barrier. When we look at the different options, can you go to the, the pictures of the various options that we had? So this one, I, I very much like this idea. In conversations with Bill, he said, uh, we, we did something similar to this, where you just have the signs on the side. We did a seventy-six-hundred south, twenty-two-hundred west by, uh, Westford Middle School for that crossing there. And I agree, these work pretty well. You see the lights, um, but that's also a narrower road. You only have one lane to travel each way. It bumped the cost up, as Bill mentioned, from about fifteen grand, I think, is what we're quoted for the twenty-two-hundred west, to somewhere between twenty-five to thirty to add those overhead arms with the flashing lights. Um, and those are with the flashing lights, not the Hawk lights. But based on your comments, the Hawk wouldn't be warranted. We don't have enough, uh, usage yet, nor would the full traffic stop. And I don't think we'd want either of those, just a thousand feet off the road. What was the other thing I was gonna mention? Uh, going back to the presentation just prior to Bill's, um, that was really good timing with those traffic counts. Twenty-nine-thousand-four-hundred vehicles per day, um, right there is, is rather significant. They did mention the possibility of widening the road at some point. We've discussed that before. It's imminent. It's just a question of how many years, how is it? So talking to Bill earlier today, what would happen if we spent money to put this in now? Would that just be wasted when it comes time to widen the road? Response was, no, we could just put this somewhere else if there's a need, if that were to happen. Anyway, um, those are the majority of my concerns. I think that that's option is something like this with the overhead arms. And if there's no other comments or questions, I think I'm ready to make a motion.
That would be it. In order.
Councilmember Southworth, were you gonna say something?
I just want to clarify what you said, the, the overheads with this type of flashing light?
Yes.
Is that available, uh, on the market? Can we do that, or do we have to?
Yes, they're readily available. And I think the timing, once we get the funding to construct, es- estimated at sixty to ninety days, if we have funding.
Does, does that fall within that thirty-thousand-dollar range? Is that what? Possibly?
Are you asking me that? I don't, I, I'm not a good person to answer that.
Anybody knows, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, so the side-mounted are like around fifteen and roughly double to go overhead.
So about the thirty then, for the overhead?
Yeah, twenty-five to thirty, I think you're correct.
So it would be fit, fit within that twenty-five, thirty-thousand-dollar range to go overhead. He, he was just saying it's a little bit more. But, okay, as opposed to taking what we see here on the photo, would we, I mean, was the proposal to stick one in the middle of the road with an island? And then also on the sides, or?
Well, I, I, I put this picture in here, I didn't have a better picture. I didn't have a good one of the overhead flatters. But, uh, I think we can do, we can do it without, we can do the two-side-mounted, but it wouldn't be as good as having it overhead because the two lanes, sometimes that side-mounted flasher would be blocked by a truck that stops for the pedestrian. And then the next vehicle coming through wouldn't be able to see the flasher.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, it's all right. Go ahead, Chris.
Thank you very much, Bill. I would move that we direct staff to install a, I'm not trying to, that's worth it. I'd move that we direct staff to upgrade the crosswalk at nineteen-sixty west, Seventyeth South to be an RRFB crosswalk with the overhead bars. And also direct them to, um, determine if funding is available in the current budget year.
I have a motion by Councilmember McConaughey and a second by Councilmember Hanson.
I would just ask for clarification or even amendment to the motion. Would that include, um, other such improvements as deemed necessary, such as repainting, removing trees, checking visibility of signs and that sort of thing?
Repainting, absolutely. The removal of trees, I'm hesitant about. Uh, because if we have the arms coming across, I don't think it's as much of a necessity. Plus, uh, the, the, these homes are right in my neighborhood. I know the folks who have lived on those homes on Seventyeth, and they've already bought some land for a previous widening of Seventyeth. So those trees are a, a sound barrier for one, and number two, they're also a little bit of a protection because you do have that street right there. We've had. We've had instances where, uh, late at night, somebody's coming out of the neighborhood pretty quick and has gone up into somebody's yard.
Maybe I could just clarify my saying, maybe it's not necessary moving trees, but would we authorize the expenditure of, of other solutions? Maybe just moving a sign so it's invisible? But, uh,
And, and other improvements is necessary.
If we don't do, if we don't go all the way to protect whoever's crossing there from these twenty-nine thousand cars that go by there, let's not go halfway, let's do this right, as well as saying this. Are we authorizing an additional expenditure to make sure we, we fix all these small things as well?
Yes.
Oh, perfect, wonderful.
That was a very long way of saying yes.
Yes.
And you're okay with?
Yes.
So we've got the motion and the second. I just have to voice my concern. I don't think that it's done as good as what is done here. I could care less about the convenience of the entrance onto the road. I hate the entrance on our back street right here, the one on the Seventy-Eighth. I just about run into that island every time I turn left there. But, uh, one of the safety of, uh, the residents, I, I just know what the one west is not. I think something closer to grade would work and be more safe. I'm not an expert, I, I want something done. I just don't think the overhead is the way to go, so.
And, and I think my response to that would be, I, I'd like to start with the overhead, and then if, uh, necessaries would look in, in the future, if the concrete becomes necessary, then, then absolutely.
Can I, can I say something? Because you just echoed what I said five years ago about the crosswalk that was on Forty-Eighth and Seventy-Eighth. You know what, let's, let's put this one in here, and if, if the fines doesn't work, we can change it. It hasn't been changed, it won't, it most likely won't be changed. So if there is some concern, we probably oughta take a little more time, make sure we do it right now because it's not gonna happen. Maybe we need to say, okay, we've narrowed it down to two. Let's take, this is so important, maybe we take just a little bit more time and say, okay, we've narrowed down to maybe these two options, let's really study out what is most effective because once we put one in, we're gonna be stuck with it for quite some time. It, it was just, that was haunting, you just said exactly what I had said.
And, and, uh, you know, I was able to get the first one, uh, and then you got the one.
I think they came about the same time.
Yeah, I mean, and I'm just saying that at least the one on Seventy, it does not work that great after.
You have a four-hundred percent commitment to fixing.
Yeah, and what's the right one? Then where?
Just, it's about twenty-two, forty.
Off of Fargo?
Yeah.
I thought that was a school crossing though, so we've only got just regular school crossing lights. We don't have these lights, and there's certainly no overhead as well.
Yeah, I'm just saying, if, they don't flash, or maybe they do flash.
They, they only flash during school hours when the crosswalk is going, oh. That was the one other thing I forgot to bring up. Um, although that neighborhood to the north does not lie within the school boundaries from Majestic Elementary School, Majestic Elementary does have the summer, uh, meal program for breakfast and lunch. So during the summer, you do get kids crossing that to head to Majestic for that program. I forgot to mention that earlier.
One last statement, whoop-oh. The one I near, I, uh, the one at the hawk at Gardner Village, I witnessed a, uh, mother pushing a stroller that was within mere inches of getting killed in the crosswalk there. And again, I wanna restate that the one on Redwood, um, hundreds of times I've seen people run through that, so. I just don't know if that's as visible, but I want something done too. I, I'm with you, so. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna pose a motion, I just think it might, might be short for what we want.
Ready? Okay. Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Higa?
Yes.
Mayor Rol?
Yes.
Councilmember Southworth?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
For House Six in favor.
Mayor?
Yes.
I- if I may, you did, you and Councilmember Southworth brought up an interesting point about other things. Uh, we say we'll go back and revisit them, and then we never do. Um, I would suggest while we're still on the topic, before we finish the budgets, maybe we should direct staff to bring back the intersections and crossings that you have concerns with, and we address those as well, so, um, that can't be said in the future. I mean, prior councils may not have evaluated, reevaluated them, but we, we can definitely make that change.
Okay, thanks for the comment, and we will work on it. Um, this will be the final item, uh, item, uh, he has been pulled for tonight, so, item seven, the discussion and possible action regarding resolution fifteen dash three-three authorizing staff to place on the November two thousand fifteen municipal general election the issue to change the form of government to council mayor form. Councilor Higa?
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, you've, you've gone back and forth again on this for the last three weeks, and I appreciate the city attorney for his comments on moving forward with the resolution. And I just want really, at this point, whether you're pro or against this idea of a form of government, alls I'm asking really is let's let the residents decide. We all were elected by consent of the people, and, you know, I think the beginnings of our country is all based on consent of the people. Why this has to come to the council or through the residents is because the Utah State Constitution requires any change of your form of government within a city municipality has to be done by a vote of the people. So that's all I'm asking, um, you know, open it up for discussion, or I'll make a motion, Mayor. Thanks.
Councilmember Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, the problem I have with, um, having us vote on this now is, I believe it was November, and I may be wrong, when Councilmember Higa decided to take off his councilman hat and become a citizen and brought this up, there was a discussion of a petition. By state law, they, they can get a petition which requires, I believe, forty-five hundred signatures to put it on the ballot, and they have until a date in April in which to do that. I believe that that is what should happen instead of us just automatically saying, put it on the ballot. I believe that the citizens ought to be able to sign a petition and maybe better understand what they're signing the petition for rather than us just putting it on the ballot. To be quite truthful, I had to do a lot of studying to figure out the difference between our form of government and strong mayor form of government, and I believe our citizens deserve the right to understand what it is they're signing that petition for. So they do have till that date in April in which to get their signatures, uh, which would automatically put it on the ballot. So I am against this at this point.
Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. When I look at the forms of government, um, you know, there's, in my mind, there's really not one or the other that is far superior than the other. I think they both have their cons, uh, they both have their pros. And, um, when I weigh those out on my mind, I know the issue tonight is whether we put it on the ballot or not. That being said, I think there's some other issues I'd like to, to bring up, and that's specifically the pros of what we have right now as we move forward. And then kind of wrap that up with how it relates to the election, but I've made this ar- argument before, uh, specifically, um, let me just present this, Steve Jones, I hope you don't want me to put you on the spot again, he mentioned something which is exactly what my line of thinking was, is let me just give you a quick list of cities. Um, New York City, Los Angeles, Chicago, Philadelphia. Okay, these are cities of strong mayor form of government as opposed to Phoenix, San Antonio, Dallas, San Jose, cities of council manager form of government. And I just look at that short list and I go, I know there's definitely four that I just mentioned I want absolutely nothing to be like. Um, on the, on the flip side, I have, uh, the others that I've listed that I'm okay with. And I, and that's just a, just looking at that list, that's just an initial thing that I dropped. But then I look at what we have today. Our form of government, number one, it is the, is the form of government that most closely resembles that of a corporation. Hands down, that's exactly what it is. With the difference being the public at large is to elect directly who sits on that board of directors. And that's what we have, and not only just the board, who sits on the board, they get to elect who the chairman of that board is, which is our mayor. And I think, for me, it's a, it's a wonderful form of government, it's the most efficient. And the mo- and the most, I guess the biggest advocate for our form of government is a group that's called the National Civic League. If you're not familiar with the National Civic League, the NCL, they are the advocate for democracy. And not only that, but for civic involvement in democracy. It's a, it's an organization that's been around for about a hundred years, and they endorse a specific form of government, and it's the form of government that we have. It's the council manager form of government. Now, all that said aside, that's all about, you know, that's the debate that we could go on, which one's better in the long run. But the reason I bring it up is this, is our legislature has not provided us an avenue to come back to this form should we go down that road. And that is the biggest argument more than any other of why I'm not willing to go down this road. If the legislature would provide us that opportunity to say, yes, if you make a mistake and say you go down four years, eight years, twelve years, and this new form of government, we wanna come back to something different, back to what we have because we prefer it. They've not provided us that opportunity. They've closed that door. If they change it, I would support this kind of move. I, I think it's, I think it would be healthy for the public to debate this, but with the fact that the legislature has not provided us an avenue through which to come back, I, I just couldn't support it.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, number of thoughts on this one. Uh, number one, the argument that's been brought up against us as a council more than once is if we say, no, we're not going to put it on the ballot, we're stifling, uh, well, we're, we're prohibiting people from voicing their opinion. Um, my thought on that is, I, I don't think that's a valid argument for putting it on. Uh, nineteen eighty-one is when we decided to go with this form of government, so people had a chance. Granted, it's been a number of years, but, uh, you don't see us having an occasional vote to decide as a state, should we change our form of government? As a nation, should we do that? We don't really revisit those things often. I think I'd be, uh, I, I think I would prefer to see this as a citizens initiative with those signatures before us as a council forcing this on the people. The other thought that I had is, I'm not sure that, well, let, let me back up. I'm, I'm not sure where I ultimately stand on this one. Um, I like some of the checks and balances, I like some of the benefits that we have with this form of government. However, uh, Mayor Rolfe, I sat, uh, next to you up at the legislature and saw how tied your hands were, uh, when trying to work with the various other legislators there. There are a number of instances where it would be very beneficial to have a strong mayor form of government. Um, there are some folks who have served in that role, whose opinions I trust, that very much favor that, uh, form of government. I, I'm still not sure. I think really what it comes down to for me with this one is we're saying, yeah, let's go ahead and put this on the ballot. I think that might be a little bit premature before we've even had discussion. I think I would be in favor of proceeding with, uh, maybe open house or, uh, public comment, public hearing, uh, to hear from residents, their direct thoughts. I've heard from a handful that say, yes, absolutely, we should change. I've heard from another handful that say, absolutely, no, we should not. We still have some time to make a decision as to whether or not to put it on the ballot. I would suggest we start with the public discourse and then let the citizens group continue their route as well, and then see where we come a few months from now.
I would just state, make the facts. Uh, it doesn't affect my term at all, so it doesn't matter to me. And I just don't know why anyone would be afraid to allow the citizens to decide what they want. It's gonna happen anyway, I, I'm confident of that, we're close enough now. Uh, with the citizens petition, I just don't understand the unwillingness to allow the, um, from this council to allow the citizens to decide. Like I said, it doesn't affect me, I don't care. Um, I, and I'm not gonna state my opinion one way or the other. You saw exact, I witnessed exactly what, uh, Mayor, uh, Councilmember Nichols stated some of the large cities in our nation. This, uh, this form of government isn't even allowed in Utah anymore. You couldn't start this government today if you were, became a new city. So it's not even allowed here. But, uh, that's, I'm not, that's not the argument today. I just believe that the citizens should be heard. I, I know they will be heard, but I think that the council should just make it easy, but, and, and, yeah. Councilmember Higa?
So I'm just gonna read, go, and I'm, I'm gonna let you listen to this. So, and put yourself back when, you know, our founding fathers said this, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, our voters, that they are endowed by their Creator in certain and evil rights given, and among these li- these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." That to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men deriving their just power from the consent of the governed. And so, alls I would say is, alls I'm asking with this motion is to put a question on the ballot. Um, and I'm gonna read that exactly. I move to approve resol- resolution fifteen thirty-three authorizing staff to place on the November twenty fifteen municipal es- election the issue of change of form of government to council mayor form of government with the question authorized by state law.
Second for discussion. Councilmember Nichols?
I'll just reiterate, just, it, it really needs to be heard. You emphasized that, Mayor, this form of government is not allowed if you were to incorporate as a new city today. And I speak against the motion purely on the fact that if we go down this road and it's a mistake and we all decide, oh, we shouldn't have done that, we cannot come back.
That's what?
Mayor Rol?
Yes.
Councilmember Higa?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
No.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
No.
Councilmember Southworth?
No.
The vote is tied three to three.
So that's a failed vote?
Yes.
I would entertain a motion to move to re, uh, let's see, re- convene, uh, our closed session.
Inconvene from that?
And then we will adjourn from there.
So moved.
Second. A motion by Councilmember Southworth and a second by Councilmember Nichols. All in favor?
Nope.
It has to be a roll call?
Because we're voting back into a closed session.
Okay, sorry.
Sorry, Ma- Mayor, I, I guess, because I had, uh, I had, one of the councilmen had, had me ask for, uh, friend out of the room. I didn't know we were gonna go back in, are we going back in?
We are.
Okay.
Okay.
Concerning what?
Same discussion.
Just personal?
Yes, just personal, we finished the, uh, line.
Councilmember Southworth?
Aye.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Higa?
No.
Okay. Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Rol?
Yes.
Phil passes five points in paper.